We should be good to go.
Thank you for that. I'm John Gray. I'm the Mayor of the Town of Seabrook Island. We're going to be the Town Council today for the April Council meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Catherine, can you confirm that notice of this meeting has been published as is appropriate and that the other requirements of the South Carolina Freedom Information Act have been satisfied?
They have.
Thank you for that. We will try to follow the agenda and the first items on the agenda are minutes to be approved. First of those are the minutes from the Town Council regular meeting of March 22nd, 2022. Now I have a motion for approval of those minutes.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussions concerning the minutes of the regular meeting of Town Council of March 22nd, 2022? Hearing none. At this time, we'll call for a vote of approval of the minutes. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the Town Council regular meeting of March 22nd, 2022, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye. Do I believe the minutes were approved unanimously? Next up, Town Council DSO workshop meeting minutes from March 29th, 2022. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the DSO workshop meeting of March 29th, 2022? Hearing none. I will now call for approval of those minutes. All in favor of approval of the DSO workshop meeting minutes from March 29th, 2022, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye. Do I believe those minutes were approved unanimously? Last, we have the Town Council work session meeting minutes from April 12th, 2022. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
Some of them.
Is there a second? Yes, thank you for your second. Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes from the work session meeting of April 12th, 2022? Hearing none. I will now call for approval of those minutes as presented. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the work session meeting of April 12th, 2022 as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye. Again, I believe those minutes were approved unanimously. Next up, public hearing items. We have no items for public hearing today. Next up would be citizens or guest presentations and comments. We have no citizen presentations on the agenda or comments. We have no request of citizens to be recognized to make comments at today's meeting. I ask that the clerk reports and comments received in advance of the meeting.
Yes, sir. I will just read. All of these comments can be read in their entirety upon request. We received the following comments. We received one unanimously. We received one from Stephen Pankus. We received one from Scott Marion Rollins. We received one from Joanne Fagan. We received one from Sydney Leonard. We received one from Suzanne Quintez. We received one from Serena Courtney. We received one from Joe and Ronnie Bertucci. We received one from Patricia Gregory. We received one from John and Sarah Dewey. We received two from Robert L. Cherry Jr. We received three from Susan McLaughlin. We received six from Paul McLaughlin. We received five from Ted Flaggie. We received one from Bill Thomas, and all of these comments were also forwarded to members of the council.
And all of the comments that you have just noted will be available to the public and part of the public record of this meeting. Is that correct, Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for that. Next up, we will have the reports of the standing committees, commissions, and boards. With Pat Fox absent today, we will not have a report for the Community Promotions and Engagement Committee. And so I will now call on Councilwoman Finkie to give her report for Environment and Wildlife Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The EWC did not meet in April. We talked about it a little bit at our workshop, partly because it just wasn't a good use of time. We weren't ready to really dive into language for amending the beach ordinance. We will meet on May 12th, the second Thursday next month at 1:00 p.m., and at that time, we are going to dive into some actual language about the beach ordinance. We had an incident, something we've talked about, about the memorial lanterns that they release on the beach, and just this week, we have one that flew inward and landed up on somebody's tree, still sparking. So those kind of things, we're talking about what should be allowed and not allowed to take part in the beach. But anyway, that's the committee report, and we'll get back to the beach stuff on May 12th.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Councilwoman Finkie? Hearing none. Thank you again, Councilwoman Finkie. Next up, we have the report for the Public Safety Committee. I'll call on Councilwoman Dan Cortalesi to give that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we had our monthly meeting of the Public Safety Committee. We continued to work on the updating of the Comprehensive Emergency Plan, and we also began some work on Disaster Awareness Day, which is still scheduled for June 17th. More information on that as it gets closer will be available. And we will meet again next month, and just a reminder that the Disaster Recovery Committee will be meeting in, at the beginning of June. So again, as the committee works on more of the details, the members of the committee will give more to the DRC. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. As far as the Disaster Awareness Day in June, is that typically, those are jointly sponsored between the two towns, Seabrook and Kiowa. Is that true in this case?
Yes, we are planning along with Kiowa. Right now, and Joe can add to this because he sits in on the meeting subject of the group that's planning it jointly. It is still the 17th of June. It will be at Kiowa, and they're looking for a space sufficient in size to be able to handle that. Both presentations and various community groups, such as the Sheriff's Department, Berkeley Electric, other community groups are being invited to this, so we need both space for, again, presentations and the tables and so on, so.
Very good, Dan. In the past, one of the things that I used to do to encourage attendance at Disaster Awareness Day was emphasize that it included free lunch. Jerry, you may remember. And I'm just wondering, Dan, is, are we going to have free lunch for Disaster Awareness Day?
You know Kiowa. Anyway, they plan on having food served there. So, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for Dan, besides the question I just asked? All right, very well. Next up, we have Councilman Goldstein for the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not had a meeting since our last Town Council meeting. However, I will give an update. As you're aware, we were looking at trying to do a roundabout in front of the Marina. That roundabout would require easements from the adjacent property owners. Since then, myself, Town Administrator, and zoning administrator, had a conference call with the property owner representative for Hollow Brook Creek, and we brought up the necessity of the easements, and they seem to be amenable to that. We did provide them now with a copy of our planner drawing so they could look at it. We also did bring up that we would like some cost sharing as this would be something we think that's useful to them in the future, and they were going to look at that and hopefully get it back to us relatively short time with their answer.
Any questions for Councilman Goldstein? Hearing none. Next up, we do not have a planning commission report. We do not have a Board of Zoning Appeals report. Reports of the ad hoc committees. I will ask Councilwoman Finkie to give us an update as to the short-term rental ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've talked about for the last couple of months, we were on target. We wanted to present our report today, but we hit a couple hurdles. And the mayor okay is postponing it two weeks. One is, everybody will notice that Pat Fox could not be here today and wanted very much to be here when we present it. And she is in a location where she could not zoom, there's no Wi-Fi, and there's very shaky cellphone service. So that was one problem, and we've been working a lot with SPOA on some issues, and they're kind of on the verge of a couple of decisions which will impact some of the narrative in our report in one or two of the recommendations. So it made sense, since we're kind of coordinating, to make sure we have that information correctly before we put out our reports. So the report's essentially done, except for those kind of edits and fine-tuning.
Thank you, Jerry. Do you have a feel for where on the calendar SPOA may land with changes that they're considering?
No. They put forth some stuff to their board at the last meeting, which I think was well-received, and they're going to do a workshop to kind of go over all the legal details and the mechanics of it. So it will be about the same time we're putting, you know, that we're, you know, presenting our report, but we know the direction they're going, so we I think the direction they're going is well-received with their board, but it's for them to make that announcement, so I will not say anything more.
Okay, but I guess we will at least allow the possibility
Yes.
that your report may need change depending on what comes from SPOA.
Yes, as they meet over the next couple of weeks. And we met with them again on Friday with Heather and John Kenny, so we got a good reading then, but it's kind of just the next step they take with their board approval and everything. Because I know there are some things that'll be more long-range, but, you know, some things they want to maybe implement for the summer, so.
Yeah. All right, very good. Any questions for Councilwoman Finkie? None. All right, next up, reports of the town officers. First off, a report of the mayor. I'll give my comments. First of all, first of all, a reminder of Johns Island Roads' public meetings. I remind members of council that Charleston County has scheduled public meetings on April 28th and May 2nd to present alternative proposals for road improvements in the area of Johns Island designated as Main Road Quarter Segment C, an area comprising portions of Maybank Highway, River Road, and Boeckich Road. Together with the public meetings, Charleston County will enable public comment concerning the alternative proposals. I mention that because in 2020, they had a series of public meetings and received public comments, and as a consequence of that, they have revised proposals that they were considering. There were five that they considered in 2020, and there are some, a couple of those have been eliminated now and new proposals added. So the point being that public comment can influence where they go as they consider these road improvements in Segment C, which is of interest to us out here since we travel through Segment C on a routine basis. Next up, update of NUSC outreach in Seabrook Island on April 21st. I met with Brian Manique, representing the Medical University of South Carolina. He informed me that it is expected there will be a groundbreaking ceremony this summer, and construction will begin in the fall for the facility that we know is coming on the other side of Seabrook Island Road, just outside of the Marina. So he indicated that the fundraising goal for that facility has been increased to 17 million. I think when they talked to us last year, they were talking, Jerry, you may remember this, I thought they were talking about 15 million. So the goal is up a bit now. And he said about 6.5 million has been raised. He noted community informational efforts, including presentations already made to the Kiowa-Seabrook Exchange Club and Seabrook Island Real Estate, an expected event at the lake out, which is not yet scheduled, and an event planned for Kiowa River in May. He inquired as to whether the town would be willing to host meetings in small groups of residents, so something that we may want to consider. I think this is probably more in the Bailey way for Councilwoman Fox, who isn't here today, but I certainly will bring this up and bring it to her attention. He also encouraged the town to consider making a financial commitment that would serve to demonstrate the town's support for bringing the facility to the community, thereby setting an example of financial support for other organizations in the community. I understand that Dan and Laurel Greer have made a substantial pledge, and as a consequence of their pledge, I think the Healy pad will bear their name. So I don't know, I don't have those kinds of connections in the community, so I can't generate a list of the well-heeled to bring to small groups, but in any case, that was something that he suggested. And next, I asked, oh, next to last, I should say, upcoming, update concerning proposed development near Freshfields Village. I remind members that in September 2021, the town of Kiowa announced a request for annexation in connection with proposed development for a parcel of land located behind Freshfields Village. On April 7th, I met with a representative of the developer, that's Riverstone Properties, who informed me that developers are now pursuing a rezoning request with Charleston County. He indicated the planned development will be a Harris Teeter grocery store about 2/3 larger than the current grocery at Freshfields. While primary access to the site will be from an existing encroachment on Kiowa Island Parkway, which is the encroachment just beyond the entrance from Kiowa Island Parkway to Freshfields Village. Current planning contemplates a connection from the site to Freshfields Village, which would be interior from the encroachment. So anyway, progress is being made, and I have no schedule from them about when things will be coming to fruition, but I thought I would share what I learned. Last off, we have a report of SPOA's decision regarding a proposed shuttle. You will recall that our town administration had brought to our attention a proposal from Seabrook Island Club for having the three organizations, that is, the town, the club, and the Seabrook Island Property Owners Association participate in operating a shuttle within the community. And in a recent informal discussion with representatives of Seabrook Island Property Owners Association, it was indicated that SPOA does not support the shuttle service that had been proposed by the Seabrook Island Club. So my understanding is that that proposal is essentially not going to result in a shuttle service. And I might add that we have received comments, maybe some of the comments that were included in what you had reported earlier, Catherine, from people expressing their opposition to having the shuttle service.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, hold on, and we'll talk in secret after this meeting. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor, before you continue with the agenda, I think we skipped over Annie in the Utility Commission, and she's sitting there with a report.
Oh, gee, Annie, is that, is it possible that we left off the Utility Commission?
I wondered if you did not want utilities.
No, Annie, I'm just, I'm just glad.
But one doesn't tend to interrupt the mayor.
Yeah, well, you know, Annie, I get so excited to give my report. I just gloss everything.
Would you like my report?
Yes, please, Annie.
Thank you very much. This is the report of the Seabrook Island Utility Commission. First of all, before I get into the report, I would like to publicly thank all of you for your visit last Friday to the utility plant. I thought that was a very good, at least the feedback that I had gotten was a very good tour, that you enjoyed it, and that you learned something. And I appreciate your interest and your coming. Thank you. On our financial side, we, of course, remain within our normal variation of the budget for the year. Our net income for the month of March was a surplus of $71,410. Our capital acquisitions within March were $17,871. And after adjusting for bonds, notes, principal payments, and capital, March showed a surplus of $70,410. On a year-to-date basis, our net income is $271,624. And after we adjust for our adjustments to capital and debt principal payment, the surplus is $242,635. Our available cash as of March 31st is 2,900, pardon, 2.1 million. On the water distribution side, we delivered 16.4 million gallons of water for the month, compared to 13.6 gallons for the month last year. Same month, same month last year, March. And that accounted for St. John's, it accounted for water received from St. John's of 94% compared to 92.63% from last year. Under our water resources, our sewage, our effluent quality continues to meet all permit requirements for DHA. Our daily average flow was .336 million gallons per day. Our maximum flow was .37 million gallons for the month. Our total effluent and deep well water pumped to Seabrook Island Golf Courses for irrigation was 10.7 million gallons of effluent and 3.7 million gallons of deep water well. Our total effluent and deep water pump for Point Golf Course was 6.6 million gallons of effluent and zero gallons of deep well. We did a whole host, as you can imagine, based now upon your coming to the plant. We did a whole lot of, we installed, I always give these reports, but now since it meets up until we installed 136 meters meter, well, meter reads, we did 134 misutility locates. We videoed sewer lateral, four sewer laterals. We did four new sewer connections. We did just a whole host of a lot of, a lot of, we did have, I think I might have said something to you, we did discover that in one of the new connections that we had to make, that Berkeley Electric had Berkeley Electric, yeah, had gone into one of our water lines and caused leaks in at these two locations, probably from years and years ago. Who knows? We set those water lines, those water lines were in when the town area was developed, the land was developed, and they've been just waiting for those connections ever since. So, anyway. And that concludes, I think, my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Chairman Annie Smith Jones, please? Any questions? Again, my apologies, Annie.
Oh, no problem.
And thank you for your endurance.
I saw I was in a new location, and I really appreciated that. However, thank you.
All right, very well. I think that brings us to the report of the town administration. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items to report. For the beach patrol update, we did start our beach patrol season April 1st, so we currently have one person each day on the beach, one person, one vehicle from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So in the next couple of weeks, that'll be increasing into our peak season as we approach Memorial Day, where we'll have four people and two vehicles. As a reminder, with the change to the business license calendar as a result of the state action a couple of years ago, we are now in our business license renewal process. The deadline to submit renewal paperwork for a business license, as well as for our short-term rental permit, is April 30th. So anyone who has not submitted or had postmarked a business license application or a permit application prior to that date will be considered late and subject to additional fees and penalties. In addition, any short-term rental permit which is not renewed by the deadline, any owner, in addition to late fees if they like to continue renting. If they do not renew by the deadline, they would have to renew or remove all advertisements and cease renting the property until it's brought into compliance with our ordinance. So this is really our busiest week of the year because everyone's trying to get their license paperwork in prior to the April 30th deadline. We do typically over 2,000 business licenses a year, and you can imagine, most of them are coming in over the last three or four weeks or so, and we'll continue to process those over the next several weeks as well. The peak season rules for pets on the beach, just a reminder, those did switch over from off-peak to peak season as of April 1st. So right now, we still have our off-limits area, so from Boardwalk Number 1 to Captain Sam's Inlet is still a designated no-pets-allowed zone. I know we did have an issue with some signage being vandalized a couple of weeks ago. That has now all been replaced. We're waiting on a couple more buoys to come in to replenish what we have along the the waterline, but we did get all of the signage replaced in that area. From the area from where about Pelican Watchins and Camp St. Christopher begins, that's where we have our designated on-leash area and all year. That's required, pets are allowed, but they have to be on a leash at all times. And then our general beach area, which basically runs from Boardwalk 1 all the way down and around to just past Boardwalk Number 9, is our general beach area. So during our peak season, pets are allowed to be off-leash before 10 and after 5, but between that 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. timeframe, all pets must be on a leash on the beach. But between that ten AM and five PM timeframe, all pets must be on a leash on the beach. One other item, I know the mayor had mentioned the Main Road Segment C public meetings that are upcoming with the county. I would encourage folks to attend and participate in those meetings, given that today the cost estimate of I five twenty-six has now tripled to over two point three five billion dollars. I don't foresee that project happening anytime. In our lifetimes, I believe there was one elected official who said at one point in time, they would do as much as a bake sale to fund that project. There's would have to be some pretty expensive cookies and brownies at two point three five billion dollars. But I, my understanding is the county is meeting to talk about the viability of that project going forward. Obviously, it's not something that's going to get cheaper as time goes on. As Barry knows with his engineering background, prices tend to escalate, not decrease as time goes on. So that's something we will continue to watch, but obviously not good news for folks who are commuting on and off of Johns Island on a daily basis. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for our Town Administrator at this time? Very well. I see Tyler's with us. Tyler, would you like to give a report as the zoning administrator?
Mayor Craig, I have nothing to report.
Okay, now we don't have you here as the Chief Code Enforcement Officer. Did you want to say anything about code enforcement?
I will say that we're about three weeks into having our part-time enforcement staff out and about on the island on a nice weekend. Haven't really had anything too significant come up to this point. The feedback that we've been getting from them is that things have seemed to be relatively calm in the evenings. And we have, which I just made. So at this point, what, before the summer starts off, I think we're going to be having that essentially start coverage shortly after you leave the office at four, we probably, to start, we haven't been going until about ten o'clock. I think for now, we're going to have them going until about eight or nine o'clock at night, then things start to pick up in the summer. We'll have that going.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for our zoning administrator stroke Chief Code Enforcement Officer? None. Uh, any further reports of our council members? Anyone? Anyone? Anyone?
Are you going to give our Town Turk slash Treasurer a report? Or is that another one? Is that another one that we're going to skip over?
Well, I wouldn't skip over it. Let's see now. Do we actually have that here?
It's right above.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I see. I see it on here now. Okay.
Here, don't we? You want to switch?
Uh, I'll now call on our Turk stroke Treasurer to report the financials for the town for the month of March twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, sir. The total fund balance ending on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two was six million eight hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars, an amount of about one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight more than the balance as of last year. Unrestricted revenue for March totaled one hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And unrestricted revenue for the year totaled one hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-four, representing about ten point five percent of the twenty-twenty-two annual budget and being about one hundred and two thousand two hundred and twenty, well, two hundred and four less than the same period in twenty-twenty-one. Please note that this is because of our renewal changes. You'll see probably an uptick in April. Expenditures for March totaled one hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven. And expenditures for the year totaled two hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and nineteen, which is twenty-one percent of the twenty-twenty-two annual budget. Expenditures for the year were about fifty thousand one hundred and seventy more compared to the same period of twenty-twenty-one. Access of expenditures over unrestricted revenues was thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six for March and excesses expenditures over revenues, which a hundred and thirty-five thousand twenty-five dollars for the year compared to an excess of revenue over expenditures of about forty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, reflecting the reduction in revenues in the period this year as compared to last year's. Any questions on the financials? And just to give you guys an ARPA update, you'll notice that we do have some items on the agenda coming up. We are, I've started to do the filing for the April thirtieth deadline and noticed that we did need a couple of things. You know, the first one is the acceptance of terms, which I did include, I think. And that goes over that we are complying with all federal guidelines that the ARPA funds have so that we're not going against Civil Rights Act or the Hatch Act or anything like that. And that would be the first step is to agree those terms. The second part is, once you agree to those terms, you designate an authorized representative and contact person. We suggest having, you designate the mayor as your designated agent and your contact person. Or signing the agreement of terms and signing other parts of that document. And then the final step is to designate the funds, as we previously discussed, to do the standard allowance, which was changed in that final rule. So we can elect to use all of our funds under the standard allowance. And right now, the only part of the report that we'd be saying that we've expended on is our premium pay that we did. So those are the only parts of the funds that we've currently used. And then the rest of the report would say that we are still trying to figure out what we're going to do with those other funds. And then this is on an annual basis until twenty-twenty-six. So every year when we do use those funds, we report to say, this is the project that we're going to be doing it on for that time period. Any questions on the filing?
Thank you, Catherine. I didn't hear any questions. Didn't look like there are any questions. I'm not going to ask any questions, so. Thank you very much for that, Catherine, and we do not have a town attorney present. Present and actually the zoning administrator has already given his report. So we are now to ordinances for second reading. There are none. And ordinance for first reading. And for that, we have ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four and ordinance to repeal and replace the town of Seabrook Island. Development standards ordinance to repeal and replace the town of Seabrook Island zoning map and to repeal conflicting provisions from the town code to the town of Seabrook Island. And I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, before we get a motion to approve that, I'd like to make a motion. I think after our workshop, we mentioned, I mentioned some of the things that I had some concerns about. And before we get into approving this as it is, I'd like to make a motion to create an additional R S F category for all property that is currently zoned agriculture that maintains the current housing density. I think the discussion we had at our workshop, everyone understands my position on this and where we're coming from. So I'd like to make that motion before we continue on with the first reading.
Just procedurally, before you can amend the ordinance, you need to have a motion to put it on the table. So I believe that's what the mayor is calling for. And one, once that's done, you've had a motion in second, then you can introduce amendments to the.
And open it for discussion. Yeah. So we need that motion to do it first. So so moved that we.
This is our second. All right, we have moved in second for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four. As presented, any comments, questions or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four?
I have a ton, but now his motion would be in order if you want to take that up. You want me to read it again?
Well, you can make a motion. I think what you were suggesting was to amend.
I'd like to make.
The development standards ordinance to add a single-family residential.
An additional single residential family category for all properties that are currently zoned agriculture that maintains the current housing density. And like I said, we had a discussion about this at our workshop. And I made my position known at that point, so there's no reason to really hash that out. I'd just like to, you know, put that before the group and see where we are.
This is our second for the motion to amend the DSO to add a zoning designation for single-family residential that will be for properties that have been in the past zoned agricultural districts. A second. I hear no second. In that case, your motion will not carry and we will proceed now with any further discussion of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four. Gerald, I think you've already indicated you have quite a bit to discuss.
Yeah, there's several items and appreciate Paula Blanch, who's joining us from Michigan via Zoom this afternoon. So we do have him available if there are any questions that come up as we go about our first reading consideration of the new DSO. As the mayor stated when he was reading the title, there's an acting, an enacting ordinance that would seek to accomplish three things. One is to repeal and replace in its entirety our existing development standards ordinance. Just for anyone who may be watching or listening, or listening, who doesn't know what a development standards ordinance or a DSO is. Here, it's our combined ordinance that covers all of the zoning, land use and subdivision regulations of the town. So everything from uses and densities and spatial requirements, setbacks, lot coverage. But then it also gets into subdivision regulations, required improvements, tree preservation, stormwater management. All those are covered in this ordinance. So it's a very, very comprehensive ordinance. We started this process, believe it or not, three years ago. Our contract with Paul, our consultant, was approved in April of twenty nineteen. So we are pretty much right at the year mark. We got slowed down a little bit by COVID early on, but thankfully our advisory committee was able to keep work progressing, thankfully via Zoom over a period of about a year and a half. So the committee completed its review, went through the entire ordinance, top to bottom, pretty much article by article, section by section. At times, we even got into word by word and what this word means and that word means. Very, very technical, minute type stuff goes into these types of ordinances. The committee completed its review a couple of months ago. The draft ordinance was then presented to the, listen, to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. I think that was February seven. It's been a little bit now. The Planning Commission reviewed it and submitted its recommendation to council at that meeting with the recommendation to approve both the new ordinance and the new zoning map. Zoning map is the second component of the enacting ordinance. What this ordinance would do, should it be adopted, it will basically redo all of the zoning districts in the town. And if you recall, we talked extensively. We talked. Yeah, Paul, we're going to have to mute you for a few minutes because we're getting a lot of feedback coming off of your line. But if you, we have you on the screen, so if there's anything you need to say, just wave and we'll unmute you. The zoning map being the second component, basically, one of the major changes in this ordinance is moving away from the original planned development districts, which, you know, really predate the incorporation of the town. Have essentially outlived their useful lifespan for a community like ours. So transitioning from those planned development districts to actually base regular traditional zoning districts, single-family and cluster home and multifamily for condos and townhome and different types of commercial and community facilities. So in order to do that, we'd have to reflect that in our official zoning map. So the second component of the enacting ordinance is repealing our existing zoning map and replacing it with a new, entirely new zoning map. The third third portion of that enacting ordinance, there are a couple conflicting provisions that still exist in our town code. And those are actually now going to be addressed in the DSO, particularly as they relate to the reviewing bodies like the Planning Commission. We had, actually had some other language, but we actually amended that when we did our comprehensive rewrite of chapter two. So that's already been pulled from the town code. We don't have to address that again. So that's basically what the ordinance will do, those three things, repeal and replace the DSO, repeal and replace the zoning map and to repeal any conflicting provisions in the existing town code. The draft that we had sent to you prior to the meeting was the draft that was endorsed by the Planning Commission. When we had a workshop a few weeks back, we did let you all know that there were some things that, that we had, we as staff had that, you know, it could be any number of things. It could be a concern with a certain policy provision if we felt something was overlooked. If it was a major change, we wanted to make sure you were aware and everyone was aware what that major change is. So we can get it out there, we can discuss it. And then there was a lot of other, just general, like, you know, housekeeping type stuff too. Because this is an ordinance that we worked on, like I said, for close to three years. So, you know, you make a change in one section, you get a few sections down the road. A couple of months later, maybe you change something and, you know, forget to, to change somewhere else where you might have a conflict elsewhere in the ordinance. So over the last couple of weeks, we went through and exhaustively reviewed the ordinance in its entirety. And well, we had about in total three thousand amendments. And it sounds like a lot, but it's not that many. The overwhelming majority are housekeeping items. And when I say a housekeeping, these are the most minute little things. It's everything from if there was a typo, if there was, we had punctuation conventions. So whether you use one space after a period instead of two or capitalizing certain terms. So as you go through, you'll see a lot of capitalized terms. Those are intended to refer to defined terms. So if a term is defined in appendix A, the definitions, it would be all capitalized. Well, there was hundreds of instances in the document where we had a defined term that wasn't capitalized. So we went through and tried to catch all of those. We had some issues with grammar or the flow of the language. And then there were a couple, couple areas where we didn't change the content, but we felt that, you know, maybe it should have been in a different section. So for example, in, in one location, we had it talked about, this is the review criteria that the Planning Commission would look at in reviewing a development application. But one of the items in that review criteria was the, the information that had to be, how many copies of a site plan had to be submitted with the application? Well, not one we just said, that doesn't need to be in the review criteria, that needs to be in what needs to be submitted with the application. So we had a bunch of instances where we just took the same language and moved it to a different location. So overwhelmingly, probably about ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of all those changes are these just simple house. are these just simple housekeeping items. From there, we had what I would call minor changes. Those are primarily just clarification or qualification. So as you go through and you looked at the recommended amendments, you may see terms like where required by this ordinance or to the extent this is required. Because there's a lot of times where there may be language that may conflict with some provision elsewhere in the ordinance. So instead of having a universal term that this is always required, where it may say somewhere else in the ordinance, you know, in this particular instance, you don't have to submit this information or we're gonna do a different procedure when we review these types of applications. Just qualification, clarification terms. So you'll see a lot of those looking through the recommended amendments as well. The last item is what I would classify as the significant changes. And that's what we had written down here, summary. You should have had at your desk when you came in. There was really just a couple dozen of them. And some of those are changes that we've recommended for one reason or another. Some of them, we just wanted to, you know, put out there and make sure you were aware that this is a significant change that's already in the draft ordinance. You know, just so we're not adopting this thing and then, you know, two months or six months from now, well, when did this change? We want to put it out there to let you know, you know, something is actually changing in the ordinance. So if it's okay, I'd like to run through this summary of the recommended changes. And I don't know if you're able to put that up on the screen. We did.
This is the same one we got.
Yeah, you should have gotten that by email. And then we also left a copy at your desk. And then we did include also, because we'll reference page numbers and sections as we go through some of these items. What I, what I did was just highlight them in this document. So as we discuss a specific section or something on a page number, you'll see the page numbers are all on the bottom corner now. We didn't have that for the entire document last time. But, so what we'll do is I'll call out a page number and then a section number. And we'll go through and discuss the, whether it's a staff-recommended change or a policy change that's already included in the draft ordinance. So if there's not any questions or any issues or disagreement with that, we'll go ahead and just start running through these.
Please proceed, Gerald.
If there's question, debate, or anything as we go through and discuss any of these, ideally, what we would like to do is anything that you decide to keep in this, we'll keep it. And then you can do one motion at the end. If you accept all of them, then you can do a motion to accept all of the changes as recommended. If you want to change anyone or more as we go through, we can actually change them as we go through, kind of on the fly. So at that point, you know, if you want to adopt the amendments as further amended from our discussion today, you can do that as well. But what I'd like to go through, we'll start on page 12. And I have Catherine put it up on the screen. So hopefully folks can follow along as well. We had in section 110, we have left it blank for three years because we didn't know when the ordinance was intended to go into effect. So we now have a targeted, we now have a schedule in place with a targeted adoption date of May. And what we would recommend from a staff perspective is we build in a few weeks to kind of transition things, if we need to update forms, things of that nature, procedures and whatnot, that we have an effective date of this ordinance of July 1st. So you'll see here in section 110 and then a few of the tables where the effective date comes into play. Our recommendation is that we put an effective date, as I said, of July 1st of 2022. And if you have questions or you want to discuss any of these as we go through, please speak up. If I don't hear from anybody, I'm just gonna keep on trucking because we have a bunch of stuff to talk about. The next one is on page 14. Actually, it's on page 15. Highlighted in yellow, it's paragraph two. We did talk briefly about this one at the workshop. There is a provision in the draft, and this is not something that we've added. This is what came out of the committee and came out of planning commission. But it is a change from what we have on the books currently. Historically, the town has not had any role on the location of trash receptacles and things of that nature. The draft ordinance does include language. So if something is left out for more than 24 hours, it would become a town violation of the zoning ordinance. So it does provide a tool if we receive complaints or something like that. Right now, they can go to the POA. It's just, you know, not something that we regulate. If this section stays in, that is something that we now would be in the business of regulating. So that is a change. Just wanted to point that out. If you don't like it, we can remove it. But we have not recommended any changes. But I did want to point it out because it is a change from what we have.
Question. Does the definition of waste receptacle include recycling bins?
I would say yes.
I'm just asking. I mean, has it been defined that a waste receptacle includes?
It's not a defined term, but, I mean, any receptacle where you store?
Waste and recycling are different things.
I mean, we can clarify.
I would suggest you clarify that waste and recycling.
So Joe, is the, are you familiar with what the current rules and regulations of Sapo are with respect to? My guess is they're called trash bins and perhaps recycle bins or trash bins, recycle bins. But my point is, do you know what their current rule is?
I believe they have to be off the street by 7:00 and stored out of sight.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Of the day of collection.
Yeah. It's been a little while since I've looked at it, but that's my recollection. So this is basically, it's not word for word the same as what POA requires. But, you know, it would be a violation of the POA's regulations if they're out there at 7:01 the day of. Wouldn't be a violation of the town's ordinance as it's worth it until they were out for 24 hours beyond when they had to be removed.
So Joe, we actually, the ad hoc committees actually had conversations about this because of the whole backdoor service thing we've been talking about. So just last week when we were talking about this, Heather said they have two ARC enforcement folks, I guess, on Tuesdays that go out and note where receptacles have been left in driveways. They go back on Wednesdays. And if they haven't been moved, they pick up the trash bin or they're recycling and take it away. And then the property owner has to pay to get it back. So I'm just kind of, I'm, I'm, I mean, when we talked about this at the workshop, it was like, do we want to duplicate Sapo? I mean, in a, in a lot of ways, this would be helpful because now folks could call either one of us and it would be a violation. We wouldn't have to bounce people around, which I always think is a good thing. We're not bouncing them around.
Yeah.
But I just wonder how we would enforce it compared to how Sapo is enforcing it now.
I think the primary benefit of having it in there is with it not being a municipal violation now. When we do get a complaint, we forward it to Sapo because it's not a town ordinance violation. Particularly, and a lot of the ones that we've received are short-term rental properties that where the, you know, the renter, the management company, whoever is responsible for taking it out, bringing it back in, it's not getting picked up. And with it not being an ordinance on our books, we don't have the ability to enforce it. The benefit of having something like that would be, if you recall in our short-term rental ordinance, we have the three strikes provision. So if you have a repeated offense multiple times, and it has to be an offense of a town ordinance. So if you have an issue where it's getting left out, it's not getting picked up, and it happens multiple times, then that gives us a mechanism where we could use that to enforce not only a violation of the ordinance, but you actually would have the ability at that point to suspend rental privileges for repeat offenses. With it not being on our books. But there's other things we can do if they have repeat offenses, you know, exceeding maximum occupancy or advertising without, you know, required license or permit or something like that. But this is probably, I would say, our number one or number two complaint. But without us having anything, there's nothing that we're able to enforce. So this would give us a tool to do that.
And just, I mean, the discussion we had, I mean, it's not just short-term rentals. I mean, property owners go away for the weekend and they put their garbage out on Friday night and they don't come back till Wednesday. And they pick up a whole bunch of property owner trash receptacles too. So it just becomes an enforcement thing. And, you know, I think part of the whole thing of promoting our coordination, I think you could coordinate our enforcement. I just want to make sure we understand that.
And really, they're not going to be mutually exclusive either. So, you know, if someone leaves it out, we're not going to go take their trash can. So if it's still there on Wednesday and Sapo goes by, they're gonna yank it and they're gonna find the owner to get it back. So what we would do is we would issue an ordinance summons. I mean, typically, what we do is we'll contact, give them an opportunity, you know, two hours or whatever to correct the violation. If it's not corrected, then, you know, we move into enforcement. So, you know, we may issue a directive to remove it on a Tuesday. If it's not removed Tuesday, that afternoon, we may issue a citation. The next day, POA still, because we're not gonna take it. POA is still gonna go by, they can, you know.
So we're gonna enforce it though if a property owner puts their garbage out on Friday when they're leaving for the weekend. We would enforce the full garbage can sitting out there. The thing is, it's just not a Monday to Tuesday thing. People roll them out early, so.
Yeah, and, I mean, I know we talked about it in the context of rental property, but, you know, if we have it on the books, it's a general ordinance. So it's any property owner who leaves it out could be subject to enforcement.
So a double whammy, the citation from the town and you have to pay the receptacle. Okay.
But I think one of the things the coordination provides, just like anything else, if you pick it up from the town side and/or Sapo picks it up from their side, you want to make sure that you understand, because as you're saying, it's a graduated penalty, both Sapo and the town. So let's say they're in violation of this. Sapo should know because if they catch them next time, it's not the first time. So I think, you know, your coordination and communication would be important of that. And piggybacking on what Barry said, some people, in addition to recycling, they put out in barrels, leaves, branches, and things like that to be picked up. So if you're gonna, you know, just say household waste, receptacles, recycling, and you want, you know, put something else into it, it could be any kind of, wow, that's all.
So Joe, your suggestion that, do you want to just make a list so that we can have a motion at the end of what changes we're gonna make? Because I would like to say for this that we should add to the definition that waste receptacles includes the recycling when we define that. When we get to the end, if we're not knocking this out, yeah, that big in motion would add a definition.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And I'm starring them as we have comments or changes. So once we get through the end, we can circle back and make any changes to those and take them up.
So Gerald, you had indicated that it's a source of complaints to the town. I guess, once you have it in your code, not in standards ordinance, someone calls and complains, but it's still necessary for the town to confirm that it's still out there. So that means it isn't something where you shoot off a summons because somebody called up and complained. You have to send somebody to go look into it and confirm.
Now, I mean, it could be a code enforcement. I mean, Tyler during the day goes out.
Someone is gonna have to be on scene.
Somebody will have to put eyes on it.
Just so everybody understands that the fact that people call and complain to the town and the town has an ordinance, it doesn't mean that the town is gonna start enforcing by issuance of summons. We have to actually verify that there's been a violation.
All right, the next one we had was on page 18. This is something that's in the actual document, not a, not a recommended change. But, well, there's, I guess, one clarification. And this is section 2.2A6, which deals with accessory buildings. So right now, basically, any accessory building has to meet the regular setback requirements for whatever district the property is located in. So if you're, you know, a traditional, single-family home, we have a front yard setback, we have a rear yard setback, we have a side yard setback. If you do an accessory building, you know, garage, a shed, or something like that, you have to meet whatever those setback, that accessory structure has to meet whatever those setback requirements are. The draft that was reported out basically has a provision. It says residential property. We would recommend if you do want to keep this in that we further narrow that to single-family residential property. That accessory buildings would have to be set back at least one-half of the required distance of the principal building, but no less than five feet. So what that would mean is if you have a RSF2, a single-family district, the standard setback for that district is 15 feet. Right now, if you were to go in, build a garage, a shed, something like that, has to be 15 feet. If this stays in, you would allow that shed, that accessory structure to be seven and a half feet off of the property line. So that is a significant change. It's a policy decision. If you're fine leaving it in, I mean, we don't have any, any staff objection to it. But, but it is a fairly significant change from what we've had on the books historically, which is accessory buildings and structures have to meet the same setback requirements as principal structures.
So Joe, just to make sure I'm clear, it's highlighted in yellow in this copy we're working from, but still in here. So that means like with Paul and you and Tyler, staff is recommending to leave it in here?
We have not made a recommendation that it comes out. It's a policy decision. Now, there are a couple others that are policy decisions where we felt strongly enough that we have made a recommendation that it comes out. But this one in particular, you know, we did recommend one change, which is if you're gonna keep it, only do it in RSF1, 2, and 3, which is the single-family detached lots. Because otherwise, now you have like all the cluster homes, the multifamily. And I mean, you could have accessory stuff kind of all over the place. So if you are wanting to keep it in, we would narrow it to, to those three. And you may even want to take out RSF3 because those are, you know, smaller lots like The Village, St. Christopher Oaks, you know, some of these smaller, single-family subdivisions where the side yard setback would actually be seven and a half feet. So if you did a 50% reduction there, now it's three and three quarters. So you're getting very close to the property line. Well, actually, it's a minimum of five, so that wouldn't apply. But, but still, you're five feet off of the property line, which, you know, if it's a large, or structure of any significance, I mean, that, that could be a pretty significant change.
Yes, I'm confused why we'd let a, a news, if you have an existing structure, why would you let someone go to their property and cut into the easement if that structure wasn't originally part of the property? If they wanted to, they still could go through zoning, through zoning appeals and see if they could get a change. And I guess my feeling would be, as I asked, the zoning administrator, whatever's feeling about this, I don't see this makes any sense at all. I don't understand why we, why we would allow people to do this. We have setbacks, setbacks can stay as is.
I agree.
Oh, okay.
I agree too, so. Chime in, see if there's anything?
Yeah.
That's what variants are for.
Yeah, they can come, they can come get a variance if they feel like it's necessary.
In an accessory structure, it could be a garage, uh, other lots.
Well, my next question is, is it defined, is there any size limit to it, a size limit, a height limit? Is there anything defined as accessory structure, or that's just open from interpretation?
There's there's quite a few definitions and. Yeah.
Paul, Paul, you got us? Is that muted?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm, um, yes, we do define accessory structures and we do have limits on size and height of accessory structures. To allow a lesser uh setback than the principal building is not uncommon. Um, and I think um, my view is a little different than what um Joe said, that on small lots where you don't have um much room to begin with, allowing some flexibility there uh for a detached garage or a storage building or um a pool, uh mechanical building. It does allow a little more flexibility rather than requiring the full setback that would apply to the the house. So, uh, you know, there are two sides to it. Uh, it's just that we thought uh by doing this, we'd allow uh the ability to uh use the property to a greater extent and probably eliminate some existing non-conformities. Uh, somebody mentioned uh the variance procedure. I guess it's a matter of philosophy. I'm not a fan of uh writing an ordinance and and uh leaving so many loopholes uh to the variance procedure. If if the variance standards are followed, uh, it should be very difficult to get a variance. It should be based on unique conditions of the property that prevent someone from meeting the ordinance requirements, uh, not just a matter of convenience. So uh, I, if if you're, if you're so inclined, I would prefer to uh leave this provision in the ordinance. Joe, is there a, is there experience with the town? That would we think that this is a recurring problem that you're solving?
From from my experience, it's hard to say, because the standard's always been you have to meet whatever the setback is. So if you wanna put a shed in, you wanna do a detached garage, accessory, you know, guest house or whatever, it's fine, you gotta meet whatever the setback is. Um, you know, most lots out here, aside from the RSF three, the smaller single family, I mean, most lots, unless you have real severe site constraints, which those are the ones that really would get into variance, because it's something site specific. But um, you know, most lots are pretty good size, you know, usually at least a third of an acre. Um, you know, they tend to have room to put uh accessory structures and still maintain the regular setback requirements. Uh, I'm not gonna say that across the board. I mean, there have been uh others who have, you know, sought variances or, you know, had to abandon a project because they couldn't. But for the most part, I mean, given that our our typical lot out here is usually at least a third of an acre, it's not as common of an issue as it as it may be in other places. Now, where I came from in Fort Mill, we had, you know, a lot of lots that were, you know, under a quarter acre. That was probably the average. We had a lot, you know, a lot of them that were old mill homes and things like that. We actually allowed them to go just across the board, five feet off the the property line. But it makes sense there, because, you know, you don't have these large lots that, you know, we we generally, uh, not exclusively, but generally have here. So it it really has not been that much of an issue. I could see as, you always say, all the good lots go first. So there's still a couple hundred lots out there, and, you know, a lot of those may have site constraints and other issues where, you know, it may become a bigger issue than it has been in the past. But uh, in the four and a half years I I've been here, it really has not been an issue. Yeah, Joe, just one thing. I was on ARC for five years. We wouldn't allow a shed on a property for the most part.
And that is one thing that I will say, I've already talked to Katrina, mentioned that to me a couple of weeks ago where she said, you know, folks will need to understand that there are things that regardless of what this says, they're not going.
But here's the problem, then, and exactly, we never would allow a shed, we wouldn't allow other things. But anyway, speaking of a shed though, what happens is if you're in conflict with an ARC regulation and so on, it then just becomes unclear to the property owner. Well, they're letting me, oh, well, they're not, you know, and then it 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 creates a conflict between the two. That's why I agree with Barry. I think one of the things we always said when we did site planning with ARC is you're in the in the setbacks.
The only thing I will say though is that they've gotta go, like, that conversation needs to start with the ARC first, no matter what. We're not gonna, I won't, I won't put eyes on them.
All right, right.
Unless it's got an ARC stamp.
I understand that.
So ultimately, they should put his audience with the ARC prime first.
If 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 they're behind the gate. Now, keep in mind that the the POA and the town are not co-terminants.
No, I understand, mostly overlapping, but we do cover areas outside.
But my, again, my point is, what happens is if ARC denies something on the plot plan and then they realize, oh, you know what? Uh, the town will allow me to do this. And then they go back, I mean, sometimes, uh, it's hard to believe, but I know sometimes those meetings with the ARC gets contentious because the property owner has an idea of what they want and will say, no, that, you know, it has to be in a certain place or of a certain, you know, whatever it is. And you get a few discussions about it. My point is, again, if you have it and you could very easily say, look, we're all agreed it's gotta be within the setbacks. That takes some part of the conversation and discussion. That's why, you know, what Barry said at the beginning, I think we should just keep it as it is. And if something needs to go to a variance, go to a variance.
I'm happy pulling this out. I mean, it seems like we have consensus here a little bit.
So if if the consensus is not to have this language, what we would probably do, would just modify it, um, and we can circle back to it. But uh, what I would recommend, if we're gonna pull it out, not just delete it entirely, but just clarify that accessory structures have to meet the, you know, the general setback requirements of the district in which they're located. Unless otherwise, another might be like some other special provisions elsewhere. So when I said we went through and did qualifiers and those, you know, there may be some other provision, especially when we get into, uh, in a minute, we'll talk about some other encroaching types of um, that, you know, if there isn't a lot of encroachment or something, then, you know, then maybe it can. But the the general standard is any accessory structure has to meet the same setback as the principal structure.
I'm good with that.
Um, the next one we have was on page nine, you know. Next to twenty-one, um, you'll see a table. And I just.
There was not, there was something on that.
It was about encroachments for certain types of structures and or architectural features. It's on your list or someone was. Yeah, that's that's on page, it's on page twenty-one. They just got mixed up on here when it printed. But the one I'm referring to is is the highlighted table on page twenty-one. This is something that that again is is not uncommon to have. And and I would say this is not as much of an issue as what we just discussed about, you know, straight up accessory structures. This is really looking at um when you have a a certain type of structure that's, you know, less than an actual accessory structure or an architectural feature. Um, and what's in the draft ordinance that came out of the committee, came out of mining commission, is that certain types of structures and features should be allowed to encroach into the standard setback. So a couple of them are called out specifically, a few others, you know, it's referring to um other sections. But um, so things like, if you have a handicap accessible ramp or a wheelchair lift, something that really by law, we have to accommodate anyway to allow someone, you know, fair use of their property. Um, you know, we have a provision where there's, those could encroach. Um, air conditioning units, generators, and other mechanical equipment, uh, being able to encroach into a setback. Arbers, trellises, pergolas, as long as they're attached to the principal building, awnings and canopies, balconies, bay windows, chimneys, driveways, which is referring to another section, uh, eaves and gutters, fences and walls, flat, which is also referring to another section, flagpoles, light poles, outdoor fireplaces and fire pits, um, paved and brick paver patios, not including driveways and sidewalks, as long as they're um unroofed and unenclosed, as well as porches, decks, stoops, stairways. Jumping on to the next page, twenty-two, uh, we have other porches, decks, and stoops, um, signs that refers to the sign section, and swing sets and similar play structures. And that's one we'll we'll talk about again in a second when we get to pools. But um, so the draft ordinance that that's before you, if approved, would allow all of these things to encroach. And, you know, some of them is just, you know, two or three feet, others that may be more substantial, ten feet or half of the setback or something like that. Um, one of the changes we did recommend, if you're good keeping this in, um, is that we qualify um above the table, where in, where it says next to paragraph E. Um, so right now, all it says is certain structures and architectural features may project into the required yard setbacks as shown in table two point four E. What we would recommend is that we qualify that and say, the maximum encroachment into any setback shall be as shown in table two point four E or fifty percent of the required setback, whichever is less. So, you know, they can encroach, but they would never be able to encroach more than halfway into a required setback. So, you know, these things are usually not gonna be as offensive to a neighboring property owner, because, you know, by and large, they're not enclosed structure, uh, not an enclosed structure. You know, like some with a bay window or a chimney, it might just be, you know, a couple feet that's encroaching into a setback. A lot of times, it's, you know, jetting out from the wall of the structure itself. It's not even, you know, the entire uh encroachment. It's just something that might be cantilevered into the encroachment. But um, I I didn't wanna call it out because it is a change. I think there's only two or three things that are allowed to encroach right now. Um, so this, this is a pretty significant change. One that I I did wanna call out specifically, um, jumping down to um, the swing sets and similar play structures. Usually swing sets, that's not something that anybody's gonna find fairly offensive. Uh, what this ordinance says is they can go up to six feet from a property, neighboring property line on the side, and they can encroach ten feet into a rear yard. Um, the next item I had on the list actually dealt specifically with um pools. Um, it's two point five E two, it's on page twenty-six. We'll talk specifically, and it says swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, reflecting ponds, and similar structures, whether above or below ground, shall be subject to all re- setback requirements for play structures. And that's a pretty significant change, because right now, a a pool is considered a structure and it has to meet all of the setback requirements. So um, if what's been recommended is adopted, you know, you can now have a pool as close as six feet to a side property line. You could be, you know, if you have a twenty-five foot setback, now you can encroach ten feet into that. So you would be fifteen feet off of a a rear setback. So it's, it's a pretty significant change. Just because across the board, everything, you know, at least as far as pools, have always had to meet our standard setback requirement. So not advocating that you change it, but we did wanna point out it is a pretty significant policy change from from what we've had historically.
Why would we wanna do this?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, a a deck, bringing that closer into, now, a deck is not something that people just go out there and read quietly. Usually, there's a barbecue going on or families gathering. I mean, you're bringing potential noise creators closer to a neighbor who may not always appreciate that. Same thing with a pool. And not that I'm, you know, against those those types of things, but in the past, you know, we've kept them within the setbacks. Outdoor fireplaces and fire pits. SPOA doesn't even allow fire pits. I mean, they don't allow anything above eighteen, isn't it eighteen inches? We had arguments about this all the time. There's a lot of things here, fences and walls. Well, I don't wanna get into fences, but uh, and I understand everything isn't behind the gate, and you might have fence issues and so on. But man, I could see just the clash between ARC rules and some of these things, and creating a tension between the property owners and people going to build and hitting one group against the other. I, you know, I think having everything within the established setbacks is is fine. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
So Joe, uh, my recollection is that you had explained to us a challenge in the village where people wanted to put their air conditioning units and then they would wind up having a problem that I think this addresses. They would be encroaching into a setback.
Yeah.
And so i- i- in that case, at least for air conditioning, I don't know if they had the same thing with generator towers. But uh, you had experience with it.
We have, yeah. And we had to amend our ordinance to allow, in certain circumstances, to allow generators and AC units to encroach. Because if if you, the last thing you wanna do is tell someone that can't replace a busted air conditioning unit when it's July and they have to wait for a variance and it's gonna take forty-five to sixty days. So we we have already addressed that now.
Why would, if somebody had it on their house, need to get a variance if the original's air conditioning stand was approved?
Well, you're assuming there's a stand. A lot of properties that were built under prior flood codes have the AC equipment under the house. And if the base flood elevation is changed, they may not be able to replace it under the house, so they have to move it outside. And that's why we put that provision.
And I know of air conditioning stands that they had to cut the corners off of it to uh make sure it fits within the setbacks. I mean, now, I understand what you're saying with the, you know, older homes or whatever.
Now, now, we have had a lot of issues where in in the amendments. Now, now we have had a lot of issues. We're in in the amendments we made weren't necessarily to a traditional single family lot. Those were where you had, you know, multi-family units where, you know, they may only own the drip line of the building. And there's not like a line that you're building up against or something like that. You know, we, I will say that's why we have all the time where, you know, somebody, they may only have one location where they can put an A C unit, but all of their electricals on the total opposite side of the house. So, you know, right now, the way it's worded, if that's the only place where you can put it in the setbacks, that's where you have to put it. So this would give a little bit more flexibility that, you know, if they, if they want to put it there because it's going to cost them ten thousand dollars to redo all the wiring or something, this would give them a little bit more flexibility to do that than they would have right now. So there there's pros and cons either way.
So if this stays in, they have to get approval to do this? Is it, this is an automatic, right?
I mean, they would still have to come in and get a zoning permit, so.
But they would say, oh, but I can do this.
Variance, which would be the one.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, typically for a variance, you're looking minimum forty-five days. Um, usually on average, they're closer to sixty because you have all the notification, the advertising requirements and everything.
It's like chimneys are on here. I mean, isn't that like part of the original structure, would that already be in the house?
Well, I I guess my question is, if you look at that list, only two things pop out as necessary items. Wheelchance, wheelchairs and ramps, obviously we have to let them do A D A. Air conditioners. The rest of this, I would all consider discretionary construction.
Yeah.
And I have no, I I just again confused why we would change the codes to allow discretionary construction to cut into an easement. The easements have been, or the setbacks, the setbacks have been there for all these years. Everyone else has met the setbacks. And now I'm al- also confused, so you theoretically could if you wanted to do this on your house, you built your house, all of a sudden now this says, oh, well, you can now, I couldn't get it through last year. I can go build my pool five feet closer, so I'll go build my pool five feet closer to the neighbor who never anticipated you building a pool next to their their property line. So uh, again, I see this as not really the intent of the setbacks. Setbacks were there to provide neighbors a vacant area between their properties and we're now going to go cut into their setbacks. If they ever wanted to, there was always the variance. You know, the variance path, they could go ask for permission and plead the case against the planning commission.
So Barry, you'd be in support of uh retaining?
Wheelchairs and air.
Wheelchairs and the air conditioning.
They seem to be.
Well, air conditioning units and generators, more and more people are going to generators.
Those, to me, are non-discretionary things. The rest of it, everything else, including light poles, outdoor fireplaces, patios, por- porches and decks opens up a a whole nother uh discussion of who, you know, I I bought the house, you bought the house next to me, now you're going to move your porch five feet closer to my backyard. I I see this as just not.
Joe, did you mention the current rules and regs for open decks? Then about a marsh or open space?
Not yet, but we were getting there.
Because it's something that's been allowable.
Yeah, we we do currently have provisions that if a property backs up to an open space lot, then their their um open decks can encroach up to ten feet into the rear yard setback. But it's not a blanket across the board. Any single family home, the deck can encroach ten feet. It's basically tailored that if there's nobody who lives behind you, uh, because it's a golf court or it's, you know, the equestrian center or something like that, then you can go out that extra ten feet, but otherwise the deck would have to meet the regular.
And they wouldn't be allowed to have like, in your section of the deck that is allowed to encroach, say that they were putting a pool in there, that pool wouldn't be allowed to be in that encroached area.
Yeah, well, well, there is some of the least reasonable justification for that. There seems to be no reasonable justification to allow encroachment upon adjacent properties that are either developed or previously built. I'm against this except for those two exceptions.
If you are going to remove the provision about porches, decks and steps, I would recommend leaving it, but only if it abuts an open space, because if we take that out entirely, then everyone over the last thirty-five years who's built one becomes non-conforming.
I understand.
So on on Barry's point, I I do have a question about eaves and gutters, because sometimes you you build a house and then it rains and you need to put a gutter or something in for drainage. Would that be one that we need to leave in there?
Our current ordinance allows it, but only for the the smaller lots. So if you have, I forget, if it's under seventeen thousand five hundred square feet, then their eaves and gutters can encroach up to eighteen, I think it's eighteen inches. But if it's a regular conforming lot, then they can't.
I mean, I just raised that because sometimes for drainage, you need to get the water into a gutter to get it away from the house versus just coming straight off the rug.
I understand that, but that should be all part of the architectural design of the building, the architecture.
Yeah, sometimes you don't know that.
I understand that. And then that's again, I I hate to put in these generic okays. If there really is a drainage issue, then clearly they come and talk to the planning and get.
And once again, when you do your plot plan for the A R C, water is a big thing. So, you know, they should look into that.
I mean, we had a really good architect, but we had to come back and do some gutters around an upper deck because.
No, no, I'm I'm saying now the the A R C is more attentive to that.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't. I'm a bad example because we wouldn't be close to approaching anything, but never mind. Can I?
Could I?
Do I want to timeout here really quick? Um, we are like on four or five of forty-two of these. And I'm guessing we're stuck here through dinner to get through them, but maybe some of these folks aren't. Could we like take a quick break and do this business and go back? Would that be okay? Because it's already after four and, you know, we've we've easily got an hour to go on this.
Easy.
Easy. Agonizingly easy. We'll get through this later.
Well, Jerry, I'm sympathetic to allowing our attendees to get to what they're attending.
I mean, we already lost one person.
So if if Joe's amenable, I'm certainly amenable to uh putting this on hold so we can return to it and then jumping forward in the agenda.
It's your meeting, whatever you guys want to do.
So let's do that. We'll come back to where 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 we are. Are we on the fourth one?
Fourth one.
Yeah, structures and architectural features.
These four guys don't even have a copy of knowing where we are, so.
You sure? I mean, this is like throwing stuff.
If I start snoring.
Well, so back on the agenda, if we may, uh, we are on other action items and first of those was a temporary use permit extension to Camp St. Christopher Conference Center Temporary Kitchen. We have a request from St. Christopher Camp and Conference Center to extend the temporary use permit for the forty-six foot by eight and a half foot temporary kitchen trailer at forty-five fifty-two St. Christopher Lane until July seventh, twenty twenty-two. So, uh, Tyra, is that something you wanted to comment on?
Um, nothing has changed from the previous two submitted that came through.
Okay, so uh, may I have a motion to approve the request to extend the temporary use permit?
Uh, some of.
Is there a second? All right. Any questions, comments or discussion concerning extension of the temporary use permit for Camp St. Christopher's temporary kitchen trailer? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the extension of temporary use permit for Camp St. Christopher's temporary kitchen trailer, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that was unanimous. Uh, next up, the A R P A, or as I call it, ARPA Funding Agreement, Request to Approve an Agreement with the U S Department of the Treasury Regarding the Terms, Conditions and Obligations for the Use of Federal Funds Under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, also referred to as ARPA. You have been provided a copy of the funding agreement. Uh, may I have a motion for approval of the funding agreement?
Subdued.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments or discussion concerning the funding agreement for the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, as it was explained earlier by Catherine, uh, it is necessary for the town to enter an agreement in order for the town to be able to make use of the funds. And by the way, we've received so far over four hundred thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds and we expect to have something in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars from the original commitments, I understand.
Yes, sir, we should be expecting.
Is that right?
Yes, we should receive the remainder of our funds in June.
Uh, so where were we? Any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the proposed ARPA Funding Agreement, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, a resolution designated and authorized representative and contact per- person for purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, you have been provided to resolution in your packets. Uh, may I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight?
Subdued.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments or discussions?
Do we have to name that authorized representative?
Yes.
So I think everybody.
They're pointing to me, Dan.
I think Catherine said it well, when she said make the have the mayor.
Yeah, we'll we'll designate the mayor to be authorized representative. I think we had another contact person, but in any case.
Well, the other contact person that we have is Joe currently, or somebody else. It could be me.
This would be wisely done. All right. So, that being said, I now call for approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. All those in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That resolution is approved. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Resolution electing the standard allowance for lost revenues under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. This is a this is something that came out of the final rule where they moved to make sure that you were able to claim, I think the amount was up to a million dollars as a standard, was it? It's ten.
Ten million.
Stand, yeah, okay. Ten million dollars as your allowance for lost revenue rather than requiring you to actually prove up all of your losses. So it's it's easier to take the standard allowance and certainly for purposes of the town of Seabrook Island, we weren't going to get to something in excess of ten million dollars in any case. So this is a resolution that elects the standard allowance for the town. Uh, may I have a motion for approval?
Subdued.
Is there a second?
Second. Just just to put in one second. Why that's important is the law provides basically maximum flexibility when you're using the funds for uh to replace lost revenue. Um, so if you remember when the interim rule came out, we were scraping that thing like, what the heck can we use this money on? Because we don't really have stuff that qualifies. But once they allow municipalities to use the funding for uh basically anything up to ten million dollars in lost revenue, we now have maximum flexibility. Um, you know, we've talked about road projects and other projects that before we weren't able to use those funds on, and we now can as long as you adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions, further questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
If that was unanimous. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine is approved. Now, jumping forward to the citizens' comments section. Uh, anyone participating in the video conference and wishing to comment concerning today's proceedings may do so by clicking the raise hand button under the participants tab. Anyone participating in the telephone conference wishing to comment concerning today's proceeds may do so by pressing star nine to raise their hand. Each speaker is asked to raise their hand to speak only once. Every effort will be made. Call on all speakers anywhere they have raised their hands when called on to speak. Please make sure your audio is unmuted. If we call on you and do not hear anything, we will ask you to unmute yourself. If we still, if we still cannot hear you, we will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which to provide their comments. Each speaker will be informed when there are thirty seconds remaining. Once a lot of time expires, the speaker's audio will again be muted. Two residents uh gave prior notice to the town of their desire to make public comments during this portion of the meeting, and I will now call on each of them to make their comments. Uh, I I believe Catherine said that the order of requests were first Mr. McLaughlin, so I will call on Mr. McLaughlin to make his comments.
I'll let him turn to Ted, not quality.
Okay, fine by me. Mr. Furlaggy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Town Council, residents of Seabrook Island. Um, I'm Ted Furlaggy, Allen on Baywood Drive. In March, I requested that the council reserve a ten-minute presentation slot for me during the April Town Council meeting. I included my S T R cap presentation and Mayor Gregg said no. Relying on newly enacted ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh one, Mayor Gregg refused to allow this resident to update the council and our community on the S T R problem with the presentation at this meeting. You need to know that this new ordinance gives the mayor the right to approve citizen presentations. The mayor can now prevent any of us, any citizen, from speaking for any reason that suits him or her. This is both inappropriate and a potential prior restraint of speech in our democratic system of government. That's item number one. Item number two, and this was the subject of what I wanted to present. Seabrook Island is a private community. At this point, between five hundred and six hundred property owners have joined the Seabrook Island S T R cap movement and that short-term rental cap. There is increasing overcrowding of our amenities. If you were here during the past three weeks, you know exactly what I mean. There's absolutely no reason to believe that the overcrowding will be. And there's reason to expect overcrowding of our private club amenities in our private community through the vacation season. Seabrook Island Club has begun to respond to our amenity overcrowding problem by initiating access controls and enforcement, hopefully Supo is doing so as so as well. It's long past time for our town government to support its property owner resident constituency by enacting S T R short-term rental business licensing limits to help preserve our Seabrook Island assets. We understand the ad hoc committee report on S T Rs is now due in May twenty twenty-two. Believe it or not, but our mayor has stated that the council will not allow a public hearing on the short-term rental committee report. I have repeatedly asked that the council open the short-term rental issue for public debate and the mayor and council have refused. The Preserve Seabrook Group request that the council make available a report sufficiently prior to the May meeting or whichever meeting it comes out to allow dialogue and citizen responses. We trust that the council will do so. Thank you very much, Ted Furlaggy.
Thank you, Mr. Furlaggy, or Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes, uh, I attended Palm Lawf on thirty-sixth and Bayou Drive. I intend to speak on short-term rentals instead. I will address a more serious matter. First ordinance this body adopted in two thousand twenty-two was not spoken about in your reelection or election. It certainly was not widely publicized. It's not has nothing to do with the betterment of life in Seabrook. The contrary focuses on granting the mayor vetting and approving power to the condition to a citizen being given permission to make a presentation to this body. Yes, there are matters of decorum, which could. to make a presentation to this body. Yes, there are matters of decorum, which can be managed, which can be managed by a great amount of gavel. However, you do not have the right to interfere, screen, or deny a citizen's right to say what he wants on matters of our concern to those who would like, even if the presentation is repetitive, in your opinion, which is a false case in the case of benign collateral. We have the right to speak without government approving our words. Applying your rule and logic, Martin Luther King would have been impeded from further testimony before Congress on civil rights because of repeating what he said on many occasions. Also, for those who attend religious service, how many times have you heard the same message in sermons? There's a reason. The listeners are not getting, and repetition is a means of instruction and greater clarity. Now, I hear the town may also be considering an ordinance on petitions and non-voting referents. I hope this is idle chat. If it's true, it's another animal in the top of the democracy under the veil of order and decorum. It's also not coincidental that actions that suddenly appear, these actions are being served or discussed, raised, when citizens decided to hold this body accountable regarding short-term rentals. You don't like the proposal, that's obvious, but suppressing democracy and free speech is not an answer. Open and responsive governance is. Apart from these concerns, this matter about how the body handles legislation, particularly hearing and second readings. What's the purpose of a hearing when the vote is taken after the gavel goes down immediately after citizens have spoken about their concerns? This sends a very clear message. You don't care about what we have to say, and no need to listen to the voices of citizens. You're going to go, you're going to go through the motions and creating a paper trail. As we've seen of late, democracy is very fragile, and actions like these only make it more fragile. It's spreading like COVID. Has it reached Seabrook? Frankly, if you don't like the messiness of democracy, you should consider another job and let the people who are more comfortable with it take it over. You were elected, you were elected to serve, not to rule, and voters are not servers.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Catherine? Were there any indications of other persons wishing to make comments during this part of the meeting?
No, sir. Oh.
Any?
Hi.
Yes?
Ellie Smith Jones, 2010, Long Beach Drive. In regard to DSO, when you've been speaking about short-term rental DSO.
Yep.
I want to state exactly what Dan had said. I was on ARC recently with Dan, and it was oftentimes that members would, property owners would come wanting to know these properties, and they would encroach on setbacks, and they would, or they would want something slightly different than what ARC rules provided for. And one of the things that we often got sort of thrown back at us was, well, the town will allow us to do it. I think it's very important that the two groups work together, that, and I realize the town has some constituents that are not Seabrook Island town residents, or whatever, that are outside maybe that property lot, and that are not under ARC, I should say, provisions, because there are some out on Jenkins Point that don't belong to under ARC provisions, that do belong to town, et cetera. But I think it's very important that the town and ARC, that what you have established really work with each other, and so that you don't wind up sort of being pitted against each other because you've got a property owner who perhaps wants to do something that is not within those provisions. I think that's important to consider. So, I would recommend to somebody to take a look at that issue.
Thank you, Annie. Catherine, you didn't have any raised hands, either from the call or the video?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you. So, that concludes the public comments portion of the agenda. I will just go ahead and do the council member comments. Any member of council wishing to make any other comments at this time? Hearing none. We will now return to our consideration of ordinance 2022.
Yeah, thank you for doing that for us.
2022-04.
Because before I go on too far, I will, I will say Katrina was one of the members on our advisory committee. So, we had, and I would say probably one of, if not the most active member of our advisory committee. So, she gave us a lot of feedback and discussion about the ARC requirements. If anyone doesn't know, Katrina's the ARC administrator, Katrina Burl at the P O A. So, she, she was a member, so we did have, we did have membership and participation from not just the P O A, but the ARC specifically and crafting. So, not to say it's always going to match up 100%, but, you know, ultimately, ours are minimum requirements, and then any association regime, whether it's behind the gate, outside the gate, can have its own requirements, which may be more strict than what the town may have for, for our requirement. So, to the extent we can, we try to get them as, as close together as we can, but there's not always going to be 100% overlap for one reason or another. Okay, so we left off on the discussion about the encroachments. It sounded like, we won't call it a consensus, but it sounded like there was preference for including encroachments for ramps, air conditioner stands, generators. I had mentioned porches, decks, if they abut a, an open space, because historically, for 30 some odd years, they haven't been allowed to encroach. But we could amend that to say only if they abut open space. But from the sound of it, pretty much everything else, arbors, trellises, awnings, canopies, balconies, bay windows, chimneys, driveways, we cover in another section. And that's something that we've historically always allowed to approach into a side yard setback. The fences and wall, well, eaves and gutters, that's one that we've, we've allowed to encroach, but only for certain sized lots. So, if we take that out entirely, then all those become non-conforming. It is, I would say, pretty common to allow, not necessarily, the two feet might be a little bit generous, but I know usually between a foot and 18 inches, I've seen allowing encroachments for eaves and overhangs. It's not that uncommon. So, if you wanted to include that, just to keep some level of flexibility. Because one thing I will say is, at least when I was reviewing them, Tyler's doing them now, but when you tell someone they could build up to 15 feet from the lot line, by and large, they typically be built right up to 15 feet from the lot line. So, if they did have to come in after the fact and add something or something like that.
Go squeeze those overhangs in. Be like, that's what I have to get for most of the site plans now is, is they have a site plan that shows the footprint of the building and everything, but they have another one that's essentially including the roof and the corresponding overhang, because they'll max it out literally to the edge of that.
If we allowed it, what we have done in the past, like I said, is 18 inches, but only for certain sized lots. So, if you wanted to keep something, you maybe reduce it to 18 inches. At, at the least, you could say 18 inches, but only for a lot under 17,500 square feet. So, I think either one of those would be in line and not be creating a bunch of new non-conformities. Fireplaces and pits, that doesn't need to be in there. Patios don't need to be in there. We have allowed historically, if it was a pervious patio, that they could encroach 10 feet only if they abut an open space. So, if you wanted to, again, try to reduce potential non-conformities, if you allow those, but only if they abut an open space. Same thing with decks and swing sets and similar play structures, which also includes pools. Didn't sound like there was a lot of advocates later for allowing those encroachments. So, when we circle back, we could include only ramps, AC stands, generator stands, porches and decks, when abutting open space, pervious, patios, when abutting open space, and then smaller lots to have eaves and overhangs encroach.
At 18 inches.
18 inches.
So, could that be just RS? What's the smaller one? Is RS, RS three, right?
That's the, I think you were talking to. Our current ordinance allow, our current ordinance says if you have a non-conforming lot, which is under 17,500 square feet, they can encroach. So, even if we didn't tie it to a specific zoning district, if you just said for any single-family lot with less than 17,500 square feet, the eaves could encroach 18 inches. That's basically what we have today.
Yeah, I think someone who discovers that they would be better off if they had a gutter, and then they find out that they're, they don't have room to add a gutter because the eave is at the end of the allotted setback. That might be.
Could I add something? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, when you look at this list, there are really two different things we're dealing with. One is separate structures like pools and play equipment, fences and so on. But there are others that are really pertinences to the dwelling, the eaves and overhangs, bay windows, the chimney. The, the reason for allowing an encroachment of those pertinences is that you might have a bay window that is four or five feet wide, but if, if the, if you're not allowed to encroach into the setback, then the entire home has to be set back the two or three feet of depth because of that, that bay window. The same with the chimney attached to the outside of the, the home. If you don't allow that encroachment, then the entire home has to be set back the depth of that chimney. So, that's the rationale behind allowing those features to encroach. Someone mentioned handicap ramps. You don't even have any control over that. The Americans with Disabilities Act addresses reasonable accommodations, and there are cases all over the country where zoning has been nullified based on someone needing to put in a, a handicap ramp, handicapped ramp, or a similar kind of feature for someone with a disability. So, what we're really talking about here is traditional architectural features that just are add-ons in a fairly minor way on the, the, the structure. The, the other things, the swimming pools, I certainly understand in terms of being too close to an adjoining residence, although for the difference of a few feet, that's not, not going to mitigate the noise one way or the other. But I, I would suggest that you give consideration to those architectural features and allow some encroachments there.
I have a question. If you have this lot, and you want to build a house on it, and you've got a bay window on the side, but it doesn't fit on the lot, why isn't the answer just don't have a bay window?
Exactly. I mean, ARC has had, we've had people move walls back if they wanted a bay window.
And you can absorb chimneys into the structure, too. You get a cutback in the house, and then the chimney goes up within the setback. So, I'm, I'm not even sympathetic on that. But maybe I'm like a hard ass, and I shouldn't be, but I'm just like, don't have a bay window.
Or if you want it, move the wall back to accommodate it, or move the, I mean, again, ARC will make you do that. I mean, we would measure a setback right out to the end of the bay window, and that would be it. I mean, that was placement of it. Now.
Anyway, that's kind of where I am on that.
I guess to recap, it sounds like we have consensus to remove most of this with a few exceptions. We, we can keep a few of those in where they're reasonable and to try to mitigate and not create new non-conformities.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, we would probably recommend just striking the language above the chart where it says, we can basically go back to the original language and, and take out the part where we added not more than 50%, because I don't think any of those are going to be more than 50% what they've been in just for now. On page 26, we have the language about pools. We can amend that to say they have to meet the regular setback requirement as a structure. On page 30, there was language regarding underground storage tanks. Let's just hold off on that one right now, because when we get to the marsh language, we're going to talk about that one a little bit more detail. So, just for the sake of time, we'll, we'll skip that for the moment. So, jumping ahead to page 41. This is where we're in the single-family residential districts. So, in five, section 53A, looking specifically at the table, you'll see this table is, is set up, and it's, it basically creates two categories of minimum dimensional requirements. So, on the left-hand side, you have minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and maximum density, or subdivisions that were, and developments that were recorded and created before the effective date. And the ones on the right-hand side, it's the same lot area, lot width, and, and maximum density, but that's for new developments and new subdivisions that are recorded after the effective date of the ordinance. You'll see we recommended for the, what right now is the multifamily districts, the cluster homes, the town homes, and the true multifamily condos. We had originally five acres across the board of a minimum size for those developments, and then maximum densities of five, seven, and 12. Going back and actually looking at what we actually have out there, those minimum lot sizes and maximum densities really don't reflect what we have on the ground in those existing developments. So, our recommendation was to drop for the existing to two acres. I don't really change anything, because we're already there. And to revise the maximum density for those to eight, 14, and 20. And again, they're pretty much already there. They don't really have additional space to put in new, you know, multifamily buildings and whatnot. They're, they're built out. So, you're not changing anything. You're just more accurately reflecting what's already in the ground, on the ground in those particular developments. But then going forward, they would all have, any new project would have to be five acres. So, if you're creating a new lot for a, a new condo project, it has to be a minimum of five acres. If you're creating a new lot for a townhome project, it has to be a minimum of five acres. Now, you could say these are also the highest density developments that are allowed in our ordinance. So there might be some benefit in reducing that minimum acreage size. But ultimately that's a policy decision. We didn't recommend changing from that. So we've kept it at five acres for each of those three, the, the multifamily type ones, the cluster townhome and, and the true multifamily and then keeping the allowable densities at five per acre for cluster. Seven per acre for townhome and twelve per acre for condos. And compared to where we are right now, what, what I tried to get with the eight, fourteen and twenty is really, there's a, a few that are going to have higher than those numbers, but I was trying to get to like an eighty or eighty-five percent threshold. So if we can get eighty to eighty-five percent of them to conform, you never need a hundred percent. So that, that was pretty good. That's how we landed on the eight, fourteen and twenty. But for anything new that's created after the effective date, cluster, right now it's allowed two acres, eight homes per acre. Anything new would be minimum of five acres and only five per acre. For townhomes, right now it's two per acre, maximum of fourteen per acre. Anything newly created after July first, the minimum size would become five acres and the permitted density would drop from fourteen to seven. And then for the mall, true multifamily, which out here is pretty much condos, anything before is two acres with a maximum density of twenty per acre. And anything newly created after July first would become five acre minimum. And it would drop from twenty per acre to twelve per acre. And these are basically consistent with what we have in our, our current ordinance today. Really the only change we're making is for the stuff that's already built, already out there. Been there for twenty, thirty years in, in most circumstances. So not really changing anything, but it is a substantive change to this particular section.
John, just if, if someone wants to redevelop a current multifamily, or they then have to go by this, right?
If it's an existing lot of record, so they're not creating a new lot like for a condo, they're just tearing down the building. Everybody agrees, we're going to let it be torn down. So right now, if they have, if it's a condo and they have twenty per acre, if they redevelop it, as long as they're not changing the lot, they could go back in with twenty per acre.
Okay.
If they're changing the lot, then they have to go up to five acres and they could only have twelve per acre.
For example, atrium. There's no way that's five acres. So if somebody someday decides to come in and level that and rebuild condos in there, they don't have to meet that five acre standard.
As long as they're working with a lot of record.
Yeah, this, yeah, confines that they're in. Yeah, okay.
Now, it, I don't have right in front of me what the density of atrium is. It might be sixteen. And if the code says if you're not changing the lot, you can go up to twenty. You know, potentially there might be a couple more than there would be otherwise allowed today because we set that twenty at kind of an, an average of what we have among all of our condo developments. So if you have one that right now is twenty-four and they can only rebuild the twenty, well, they would actually have to reduce the number. But if you have one right now that has fifteen, sixteen and they all agree to tear it down, they might be able to add a couple additional new ones. So as long as they're not changing the lot of record, then this is what would apply for the maximum density.
Just one.
If there weren't any issues or objections to that, we will move on to next one, which is in five point three B. Which is straight around page thirty-one. Really all we did here, there was some language in the table that was actually a little bit off when it was dealing with the RSF three. So we just clarified that to bring it in line with our current ordinance, which basically has a minimum lot size of seven and a half feet. But then adding also no less than fifteen feet between structures. So if you remember, we did an amendment a while back for the village. And we said basically if there's a, a new undeveloped lot, you have a minimum of seven and a half feet. But if there's a house next to you, on top of that, you have to make sure there's no less than fifteen feet between structures. So if that one was permitted to be built five feet off the lot, then you have to be ten feet because you don't want them to be closer than fifteen feet. So this is just reflecting it and, and bringing it in line with what we have on the books currently. Any issues or questions about that? The other one on page forty-two. Under RSF one, this is also in table five point three B. The only changes we recommended were, and this is for lots recorded after the effective date of the ordinance. So this doesn't apply to anything that exists as an existing lot of record. This is if it's recorded after the effective date. That that property that is RSF one, and I know we've already talked about the replacement for the agricultural district, those in our map are intended to all go to RSF one. The version that came out of the committee and the planning commission had the same front side, rear yard setbacks as RSF two. And in my opinion, if these are going to be larger, more estate lots, then they should have bigger setbacks. So you want to get them further from the street, further from the property line. You don't want them to be on top of each other. So our recommendation was to increase the front yard setback from thirty feet to fifty feet to increase the side yard setback from fifteen to twenty-five and then increase the rear yard setback from twenty-five to fifty to reduce the lot coverage. That's how much of the lot can have a structure on it from thirty-five percent to twenty-five percent. And then also requiring a fifteen hundred square foot minimum dwelling. So what the intent of that was to do is, you know, if you're, especially if you're backing up to property that's going to go from agricultural to RSF one, now these structures are going to have to be further away from your property than they would have had to have been under the original permission. So by having a larger setback requirement, you're spreading the buildings out more and you're pushing it further away from potentially further away from neighboring development. So our recommendation was to make that change to have larger setback requirements for RSF one. Any concern or objection to that? Right? On page forty-three and forty-four, I told you there was, there were a couple that are significant policy changes that we just had all kinds of concerns with and actually recommended getting rid of them. This is one of them. It's called in, in the draft that came out of committee and planning commission, the established front yard setback. I actually had to sit down with Paul yesterday and find out what the heck was actually meant by this because I read it like five times. It just didn't make sense to me. But once we went through it, we looked at it. Where I came from, I came from a place where you had a lot of old houses where, you know, if you go into an old mill village, it might be zoned and the minimum setback on the front yard is thirty-five feet. Well, if all those houses were built a hundred years ago, they may only be ten feet. So we had provisions that said, you know, on the same side of the street, if they're all within so many feet of each other, you could take an average and then apply that average and reduce the minimum setback. So, you know, if they're all ten feet off the curb, you don't want one to go in and make that one be thirty-five feet. You would allow it to come up and be consistent with the other ones. What this ordinance is really doing is really the opposite. I mean, I guess you could say I would allow that, but we don't really have anything that approaches on the front for the most part. What this ordinance is saying is you would have to go and take an average of all the, the houses within two hundred feet and take an average of what their setback is. So we went, we use an example, we went out and looked at Marsh Street. Well, a lot of the houses out there, people built as far back from the street as they could and they're basically on top of the marsh and a lot of them are even approaching now into the marsh. And what this ordinance would say is we would have to take an average. So if the average of those houses was fifty or sixty feet and there's a vacant lot, somebody wants to build on that vacant lot, well, now that house has to be the average and it's pushing it way far back away from the street. Now, on one hand, yes, you're going to have consistency along the streetscape. All the houses are going to be pushed further back. But my biggest concern and the drawback was in areas where you have a marsh. There's a heck of a lot of marsh on this island. You are now pushing houses back closer to the marsh. And we'll talk about some of the changes on the marsh side too. That just didn't seem like something that served the public interest, making them move further from the street, closer to the marsh. So our recommendation was to just write that whole paragraph entirely. But it is in there. It's a major change, not something that we've ever required in the past. If you want to keep it, we'll put it back in, but our recommendation was to. Comments, concerns?
I'm okay with your recommendation. Makes sense. Your recommendation makes sense.
Certainly. You would eliminate the notion of trying to cite structures in some sort of uniformity with what we call adjacent structures. So.
I mean, they still have the option of building.
You mentioned Marsh Gate and I may have been trouble picturing in my mind. This is really. You know, for the most part, it seems to me that we don't have blocks with houses house after house after house laid out to be to look uniform from the curb. Kind of get cited where they get cited for whatever reason. I think this may not have, this may not really be well-suited to our community anyway.
Yeah, I, in my opinion, it's not. That's why I recommend to do away with it. I mean, there, the, the benefit is, you know, if you're taking an average, if you don't have, if all the houses are sixty, seventy-five feet off the street and you don't require some average, if the minimum setback's thirty feet, you can have this one that's thirty feet. It kind of sticks out like a sore. So that's, that's the benefit.
It opposes those requirements. It isn't necessary.
In my opinion, that's correct.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
The next one, sixty-two, page sixty-two. Now we're into the mixed-use districts, the language that came out of planning commission that said housing diversity shall be required. So if you have a mixed-use project, you have to mix in a residential use. I'd never like to try to force a use in an area. So my recommendation is that we change it to housing diversity may be required. That it's subject to approval by council and that the planning commission, if they feel based on the recommendations of the comprehensive plan that housing is appropriate, they can recommend it be included. Council can approve it, be included, but it's not written in the ordinance. It has to be included. Minor change, but a change nonetheless.
So what's the meaning of housing diversity?
That you have different types of housing. So you wouldn't just have single-family homes in a mixed-use, but you would have to have, you know, maybe single-family and townhomes with different types, different price points.
So mixed uses is mixed use. You can have residential mixed with other, other uses. So why does it have to be housing diversity if it's mixed use?
It doesn't have to be. That's why I said it may be required, but it doesn't have to be.
What's the point of maybe?
I mean, you might want. Leave it to council.
I would just eliminate it.
I, I probably wouldn't eliminate it entirely. We, we actually do have areas in our comp plan where it does specifically say mixture of residential and commercial. So.
What's mixed use?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it doesn't require housing diversity.
Uh, but it does require housing.
Yeah, but that's a mixed use. So that's okay. You can have single-family or townhomes or cluster homes and other uses.
Yeah. The, the way it's worded currently is it says you have to have, in a mixed-use development, you have to have at least two different residential types. So that's what I want to struck because you may not want, it might not be appropriate to have any residential. You can mix different uses. You can put in, you know, community facility and commercial. That's technically mixed use. But you may have instances where you want to have housing. So we could take out. My, my recommendation is to leave it that it may be required. So you're not obligated to do anything, but you're giving council the option that if you think it's appropriate, you can require it. But it's not.
How do we, how do we make that happen? So if somebody comes in, they want to develop it and then we get to decide whether or not we want to require them to have housing diversity in their development?
Yeah, we'll go through a staff review and then from staff it goes to planning commission. Planning commission would make their recommendation to you based on what's in the comprehensive plan. So if somebody came in with a development, just says an annexation, somebody comes in with a development and they're showing no housing on it. It's just straight up commercial. Planning commission could look at our future land use plan, which may say, well, this should be a mixture of residential and commercial. So the planning commission could recommend to you that, you know, it would be appropriate to have housing, whether that's one type, multiple types. I wouldn't even speculate, but this is just leaving the option open that they can recommend and council can require housing, number one, and different types of housing, number two. But you're not obligated to do so. And it does say one or more. So we, we could, we could take out diverse, is diversity the issue?
Someone who wants to do a mixed-use development and include residential, that's okay. It's mixed use. As long as they meet whatever the requirements are. But requiring them to include residential seems a little onerous. There are other uses.
Yeah, but there may be an instance where the comprehensive plan, they may not want to do it. The comp plan calls for it. Council may want it. And if you don't give yourself the ability, you can't. You have no basis to ask them to do it.
As you say, maybe, maybe. I don't know what that means. Maybe. So it's a recommendation.
Preserving an option.
I like preserving an option. Because I think as we're sitting here thinking through this, there's no way we can kind of get in our minds what might happen out here on some of these properties off of Superpower Road and the option might be nice. The option might be nice. Can, um, are you totally, you can ask a question?
You can ask a question.
Thank you. So suppose, for example, this property over here wants to be developed and they wanna come in. With a large, massive commercial development. With no residential as a piece of it. If I'm understanding what Joe is saying. Well, is that annexed property? Let's say it's to be annexed property so that you would need to approve it. Okay, so let's get that covered as well. So they're coming in and they're wanting a commercial piece of property and really wanna develop it commercially. And you as a town council perhaps want to be able to rent it or have more control over. What is in fact being, being built there. If you don't annex it, well, then that, that's that. But if you annex it. And you want some control, it sounds to me that by having this and allowing your town council. To have options available to you, then you have more control over what may or may not. What, what they could do. That's the way I look at this. And, and from a community standpoint, you know, to me, you know, if they're gonna have sewage, you know, they don't wanna provide sewage to it. You know, I want you to be able to have options and I want your residential closet to have sewage, but that's beside the point right now. But anyway, I'm just saying, I think you guys maybe need to consider this as a means of. Having, leaving yourself more options available to you because you've got this clause.
You good, or you wanna change it?
You're saying rather than requiring it, it may be required.
Everybody good? We'll move on. Uh, page sixty-eight. Um, where it talks about driveway spacing. We had some instances where we were dealing with center line to center line, some where it was edge of pavement. My opinion was let's just standardize it and be center line to center line for calculating the distance between driveways, so. It's a minor change, but it is a change. Um, on page seventy-nine. Um, where we have, we're in, now in the conditional uses section. Um, so these are uses that are allowed in zoning districts, but specific uses might have enhanced requirements. So for an open-air recreation use, which our ordinance defines as all kinds of open air. It could be passive recreation, it could be oak ramps. Crab dive, I mean, it's all kinds of stuff that's open-air recreation. Um, the, the draft basically said. Any open-air recreation had to have a level C buffer. You go into the level C buffer requirements, fifty feet. Now, that seemed appropriate if it was like an active, you know, tennis court or a baseball field or something like that. But if it's just a passive recreation area, to me, I wouldn't even think you would need any buffer. So. What we've recommended is we, we only apply buffer requirements for athletic fields, athletic courts and pools. Um, and basically it would be if it was unlighted, it would be a class B buffer, which is thirty foot. And if it's lighted, it would have to be a minimum of fifty-foot buffer. So it's just kind of narrowing it down. And saying like, if you're a boardwalk, you don't need a thirty-foot buffer off the boardwalk, but to me, it's just over two. So it's just kind of taking it and narrowing it down to specific types of open-air recreation. The ones that are most likely to be problematic if you have property right next door to it, which. Is really athletic fields, courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, volleyball courts. And then just having a, a larger buffer required if they're lighting.
So on this one, well, why would you have to potentially do four? I mean, it could be a B or a C if it's lighted or not. Pools generally shut down. I mean, most pools are, that I'm aware of, and I was a swimming pool person for years and years, usually shut down. You know, like this one here, the lake house or, or oyster catcher, I mean, those pools shut down when they're. When it's water. Are, are you going to start, I mean. I'm not sure why you would have pools on two different.
The reason for it is there's no requirement that you close. So a pool can be used anytime. So most of them, yes, probably do close at a certain time. But if it is lighted, because we don't say it has to close at nine or ten or whatever time. Just if you have lighting, then you have to have a water buffer.
So this could be a private closed pool?
No, this is only for an open-air recreations. A private pool would be accessory to a single-family residence, so. This is really like, um, if you have, let's just say the POA owns property and they wanna put a pool. If they come in and say, well, it's not gonna be lit, well, then you just have to have a thirty-foot buffer. If they say, well, at some point, you're, you know, we are gonna light it or we wanna have the ability to light it in the future. Then they would have to have a fifty-foot. Any other questions on that one? Any issues? On pages eighty-nine through ninety, we're still in the conditional uses, but now we're talking specifically about. Um, short-term rentals. Um, our, um, business license, license year has changed to. May one through September thirtieth. All this is doing is just revising our, and, and we've already. Kind of built it in, but now it's just making it explicit that it's on the same license year as, as a business license. Page one oh two. Um, this is, um, when we're getting into the, um, some of the environmental regulations. Um, this is specifically about the properties that are subject to the OCRN beachfront jurisdictional line. I've never liked our current ordinance and how it specifies what properties are subject to it and what the requirements are. All I was trying to do was simplify it. So, um, in section ten-three. There was actually a call-out to the name of the statute while there was a reform bill that was passed a couple of years ago. It's actually not even named that anymore. So that's just cleaning up some state statutory, um, reference. Um, but ten-point-four. What it says now is it, you know, gets into north Estero River and oceanfront and. You know, how far you're away from it and, and this and that, and questions of what does adjacent mean? All I said, I amended it to say is the provisions of this section. Shall apply to all properties which are subject to any beachfront jurisdictional line established by OCRN. Basically, if there's a beachfront jurisdictional line, you're subject to this. So that was the first one, um, ten-point-four. Really just trying to simplify the, um, requirement. I mean, when I first got here, I was reading one of them. In no event shall construction be closer than or seaward of thirty feet landward from the landward edge. I don't even know what that means. So just trying to simplify some of this language and just says. You know, basically, we use the most restrictive of these three options. It's either the setback line mandated by DEHAC. We would take, uh, an average lot depth and it can't be more than seventy-five percent of the average lot depth. Or thirty feet from the landward edge of the. So very simple, not really changing substantively anything, but just simplifying it. Um, and then adding an exception, which is that if OCRN permits it, then it's allowed. So if they permit a dude walk over, if they permit a dock or something like that, it's allowed. Any issues, objections to any of this? Um, ten-point-five A, if you remember, we were talking about buried propane tanks. I said, we'll get to this one. When we talk about the marsh requirements. So ten-point-five deals with the marsh requirements. This was something that the committee felt very strongly about, that the town should be. More restrictive and more protective when it comes to marsh resources. Um, what we have currently is a twenty-five-foot setback off of a marsh critical. So DEHAC comes in, they say, here's the critical line, this is where the marsh is. Our ordinance says you have to be twenty-five feet off of that critical line. However, we do allow, if you're an open deck. If you are a pervious patio, so water can go through it. Um, or if it's something that's buried underground. Um, you don't have to meet that twenty-five-foot setback. So an open deck can actually be fifteen feet. Um, a buried propane tank can actually be right up to the water. Um, it's not a, not considered a structure. Um, what the committee recommended with planning commission included in their endorsed version. Is that we just go to a straight across the board, there is a twenty-five-foot marsh setback requirement, no exceptions. Decks can encroach, porches can encroach, underground tanks can encroach. AC units can encroach, generators can encroach, it's hard twenty-five feet. And that's the requirement. That's, that's the recommendation.
This is twenty-five feet. Within twenty-five feet of any wetland, marsh or. Typical marsh vegetation. But it's not the critical one.
I mean, as determined by OCRN. I mean, we can change it to say from any critical. Um, but a wetland technically is the Army Corps, so it wouldn't, it would be a different reference, but. Uh, we could say from any wetland.
Well, help me out there, Joe, because if there's a critical line, the line. I, I'm assuming the critical line is something drawn on a map by someone. But when you just refer to a wetland. How do you know where the end of the wetland is? When, when does the wetland stop? If you don't, if you can't refer to a critical line, how do you know you're at the twenty-five feet from the wetland? Or a marsh or a marsh vegetation?
A, um, a wetland is something that would be delineated, I believe it's Army Corps of Engineers. It's a defined term and it just referenced as being defined or regulated as a wetland by either the state and or federal.
Yeah, choice, wetland. Wetland is a fine term for marsh. Marsh is the next word in the series.
Yeah, and, and marsh is not a critical, that's why I said we could convert that to a. Yeah, we can say, I mean, I guess we could take wetland out and just say critical area, cause critical area. Does include wetland. So you could say no structure shall be placed above or below ground within twenty-five feet of any critical area and just end it there.
Something that you can actually point to and know what it is is what I'm looking for. Because what, what's recited here is wetland, comma, marsh, comma, or typical marsh vegetation, whatever the acronyms. I have no idea. I don't know how anybody would know.
I like Joe saying critical area because he defined that and that includes wetlands, so.
We don't even have to say as determined by OCRN, I mean, it could just be twenty-five feet of any critical.
Yeah, cause we already defined it. I mean, in the definition of it, it.
That's the easiest one.
So Jix's quick question though, cause a lot of times you talk about. Things out there that would be non-conforming. Does this put a whole lot of people in non-conforming?
It would. I mean, basically for thirty-five years, we've allowed open decks and, and other stuff to encroach.
So it's like if somebody had to put in a new propane tank, would it, would they have to meet the new setback or could they put it back in where it was?
They would have to, if they take out what's there, they would have to conform with whatever they put back. Now, I will tell you, I have seen somebody go out putting in a propane tank without a permit. Um, and basically dug right up into the marsh. So. Not a fan. No. I don't wanna speak for the committee, um, but the discussion, the debate that took place was. You know, these marshes aren't receding. You know, sea level, sea levels are rising. The marshes are moving closer and closer to the properties. And eventually, basically just need to draw a line and say, going forward. What happened over the last thirty-five years has happened, but going forward, we're not gonna allow anything new. To get closer to a marsh. And that's basically the recommendation that came on.
A good start for the environmental committee talking about having a margin wet. Yeah, okay, good. I'm, I'm good with it.
Any other comments on that one? Right? Uh, page one oh four. The ordinance that came out of committee and planning commission said. On lake, lagoon or golf course lots, the minimum, uh, rear lot setback must be twenty-five feet. And that was another one where we had. Our current ordinance allows, and we talked about this before, if you back up to an open space, including the golf course. You can encroach ten feet. So if we're gonna allow those types of things to encroach. Then we don't need to require twenty-five-foot. Setback off of. The golf course. So my recommendation is that we, we leave this section in, but we change it and call it water bodies, which is a defined term. It says no structure shall be located within twenty-five feet of any. Um, we may not even need lake or lagoon. Um, but it was written as any lake, lagoon or other water body. I think water bodies might include lake or lagoon. And that's not something that we've required in the past, so if it's a freshwater lake. We don't require any setback from that. This would be a, a new provision, again, trying to.
Except we just said that we were gonna do the setback for the wetlands and water body includes wetland in the definition.
The wetland, that's. Um, a different definition. We can, we can strike wetland from the definition of water body.
That might be a good plan.
Yeah, that's probably the best thing to do, cause wetland is a separately defined term. And that addresses the issue, cause the. Definition for water bodies says any pond, lake, lagoon, channel, if we strike wetland. Or basin which ordinarily or intermittently contains water and which has a discernible shoreline, including those that are a result of development. So basically, they're standing water there, twenty-five foot setback.
So Joe, if it's a house right now that is less than twenty-five feet. And it burns down and they wanna build exactly on the footprint that they have. But they were less than twenty-five feet, are they allowed to be built on the exact same footprint? Are they grandfathered as long as they don't change their footprint?
There's a. There's a provision in the non-conforming use section when there's something, I don't remember the exact language without jumping ahead to it, but it's basically something that's destroyed by no fault of the owner, they can rebuild within the foot, the original footprint. Any other issues or concerns about that? Here in, I'm gonna jump ahead. Pages one oh seven and one oh eight. Um, this is where we're getting into the buffer language, buffer requirements. So if you remember, we talked about this one for quite some time, we had a workshop a little while back. And I just didn't like what the table looked like, it was kind of confusing, I just tried to simplify it. Um, so it now includes every district um, up against every other district, so depending on what abuts, tells you, does it need a buffer or not, and if it does, it's either going to be an A, B, or C, which is going to correspond to a twenty, thirty foot or fifty foot buffer. And then the issue with non-residential use, uh, we put in a footnote, says, any non-residential use which is legally permitted within a residential district, either by right or as an accessory use, must observe a minimum buffer when abutting adjacent, an adjacent residential use or district. So what that means is if you look in our, our districts, the residential districts, several of them allow things that are not residences. So like, uh, if you have a regime, you might be allowed to have a neighborhood pool or a little, you know, community meeting space or something. This is basically saying if that's abutting another residential district or lot, then that would be required to have a buffer, because it's a non-residential use of abutting a shared property line with, with a residential, so. I think this is the intent of what was in the original version, but it's just simpler and easier to refollow. Didn't really change any substance of it. Uh, if there are no issues there, we will go to one eleven, which deals with driveways within a buffer. So I mean, we may want to stick something in there, um, from time to time. If you have two pieces of property, there may be an internal connection between them. Um, and it would be appropriate to put some provision in our buffer language to allow internal connectivity. In order to do that, you have to allow a buffer to go through, or a driveway to go through a buffer. So what this says is generally a buffer or a driveway cannot go into a buffer. However, uh, it can be allowed as long as it's A, providing internal connectivity between two, between two properties, that it's constructed roughly perpendicular to the property line. So basically, you're not going through the buffer parallel to the property line. You're just going straight through roughly perpendicular to the property line. And the developer would be required to provide enhanced screening, so basically whatever trees and shrubs would have gone where the driveway is, they need to enhance the screening next to the driveway to, you know, meet the intent of the buffer requirement. So minor change, but something I thought, you know, could come into play at some point in the future. Any issues, concerns? Here in, uh, we will jump ahead to paragraph, uh, ten below. We had language that, um, if a CO was issued before um, the buffer was completed, that the developer could put up a surety to make sure the buffer is completed. I just wanted to put in some language kind of further defining the requirements. So it has to be at least a hundred and fifty percent of the value of any remaining work. It has to be a cash deposit, certified check, irrevocable bank letter, credit, or surety bond. So basically the same thing we have elsewhere in the ordinance where we talk about performance guarantees. Just putting that in here to specify what those are. Assuming no issues or concerns.
Well.
One eighteen. Around here, it shows up as one, so one seventeen. Where we require a tree survey to be completed. Uh, I put in there that, that it has to be completed by an engineer, surveyor, landscape architect, or, or certified arborist. Can't just be any Joe Blow coming in, preparing a survey, it has to be a qualified professional. Should be an issue. On the next page, one eighteen. Uh, we have language in there that basically, let me take one step back first, on one seventeen B, where it says protected tree permit is required for removal. Um, our ordinance says if a tree is over twelve inches um, in diameter, then you have to have a tree removal permit. Uh, this is not something I had on my list, but I did want to point out, twelve inches is what our ordinance currently has. Charleston County is at twenty-four, Kewa is at twenty-four. Most other coastal communities are around eighteen, sixteen to twenty-four inches. Twelve inch tree is very small.
Yeah.
Um, some of the other communities, like I know Folly and I don't remember if it was Sullivan's or Olive Palms, um, they have twelve inch, but it's only for certain species, like a live oak might be twelve inch, but other ones might be twenty-four inch. So if you wanted to change that, now would be the time, but twelve inch is what we have currently. Um, but it basically says if you're removing a twelve inch tree and you're outside of the boundaries of POA's jurisdiction, you have to come to the town, you have to get a permit. And the only way, getting to the next page, your permit gets approved is if it poses an imminent safety hazard to nearby buildings, pedestrians, or vehicular traffic. If the tree is diseased, dead, or dying. Um, if it's been weakened by age, storm, fire, or other injury. And that's it. Anything else requires approval of theirs. Um, this is, I, I did make a couple amendments to this, this is basically word for word what the county has and theirs. But the county's is for a twenty-four inch tree, ours is for a twelve inch tree. So if you want to remove it to develop or build a building and there's a twelve inch tree in the way, every twelve inch tree now has to go to the board of zoning. So we may want to go in and change that to maybe an eighteen or a twenty-four inch tree. Or we may want to say, well, certain types of species, we want it to be twelve inch, but others would be eighteen or twenty-four. It, it could be a lot.
I mean, if this is word for word for the county, why don't we use the county twenty-four inch tree then? Makes sense to me.
Does Sapporo have a rule that's different?
Well, Sapporo only covers like the single family properties.
Okay.
And our ordinance accepts anything that's on Sapporo. Now, what their requirement is on the single family property, I don't know right now.
Like Jerry said, if we're gonna mirror the county, you must mirror the county completely.
Yeah. Seems logical.
Or, I mean, we could keep twelve, but only for certain species that we really want to protect.
But then we need an arborist sitting here right now and telling us which species we're gonna.
We have an arborist.
Oh, that's right, we have Robert.
He's just not here. He's not here right now, but we have an arborist on staff.
You didn't get to sit through these three hours, so I mean, um, I just think we should mirror the county.
Is there consensus on that?
It's fine with me. No, I think knowing Katrina would have put this mitigation and everything in similar to what the Sapporo's is. It looks pretty similar.
Well, if we have consensus on that, we'll jump to one twenty-three. Um, this is in the parking section, it gives the planning commission some limited authority to modify parking requirements. So if there is a likelihood of bike and pedestrian traffic, you know, they can do shared parking. Um, we do have a marina, the marina's getting ready to do a bunch of, um, basically day docks where somebody could just pull up, pull up to a dock. Just giving the planning commission the authority to, to take that into consideration and, you know, if they want to knock a couple parking spaces off, because you know, they think or the applicant can demonstrate that people are likely to come by boat. They come and buy boat, they don't need a car or a parking space. So again, it's just creating um, an, an option or flexibility for them to take that into consideration, but not mandating that they take it into consideration. Okay. Finally, on page two.
I mean, everybody's gonna tell me for asking this question, but do we need to do anything about LSV parking? Or is that just general parking?
It's just the vehicle, I mean. They don't regulate that anywhere different than the regular.
It's just that where there's five car, where there's three cars, you can get it by that, but we don't need to worry about that counter, okay?
Um, there, there was some discussion in the past about whether we wanted to require, um, electric charging stations in parking lots. And it was something we talked about, I actually brought it up with the committee, but it was not included in the recommendation. We actually have had more people calling town hall, um, particularly visitors, asking if there are electric charging stations in the community. I don't know of any on Seabrook Island. Um, nor do we have anything requiring them, but, but that's something you wanted to require. The parking section would be the place to do it. I wouldn't require every parking lot to have them, but if they had, you know, if they were required to have a minimum number of spaces, then maybe they have one or two or something like that, but not, not required, it's not even on my list, I don't have any language for you, but it is a, a growing trend in end zoning, particularly on the parking side, to uh, require some electric vehicle charging infrastructure.
I know that this is gonna be like almost set in stone, but maybe as we know a little bit more about LSVs and charging, maybe that's something we could come back and amend with a little more information in here.
Okay.
And not do it this time around.
Or maybe we'll put some in, we can get a shout out on Elon Musk's Twitter.
Hey, maybe he's.
Taking it over now.
Maybe he paid for it.
Uh, that was actually, I, I know Joanna was here in the meeting a little while ago, and she had asked a question of um, if an applicant requested funding from ATAX to pay for a charging station, would that be eligible? I'd never actually thought of that before. And my response was, well, as long as it's publicly accessible and you know, available for tourists, then yes, it would be, so.
It's down here in the parking lot.
Just, just enough, though. The problem with charging stations, I'm fairly sure is if you put a charging station in, you have to pay for electricity, because there is no resale electricity in the state. So you can't put a charging station in there and then charge someone to use that charging station.
No sliding the credit card for two hours.
No, because there's no resale electricity in the state, so you have to be sure if you're gonna mandate someone to put in, that they're gonna pay for electricity.
I've seen them in the state where you have to have a card.
If Berkeley Electric put it in, they can charge for it and somehow reimburse us if we had an agreement with them, but that's why I'm saying maybe we need a whole lot more research.
Right, you can't force, if we put it in here, we can't put a credit card swipe and say, oh, well, the council could have the resale electricity.
So all this argues for more research and maybe doing something on this issue down the road.
That sounds like a great task for the environment.
Of course, you have nothing on our plate.
All right, um. Page one forty-four, most of these should be, I hope, fairly minor. Well, they're as minor as we want, maybe. Uh, one forty-four is just stating explicitly now we're in the sign section. Temporary signs may not be placed in any public right of way in the town or on any town property, excluding anything that's put out by the town or another governmental agency.
What about all these little things we're getting now, I see more and more often, is don't let your dog. I mean, little things like that. John, Greg, this means you don't, don't.
They're kind of staked out in the ground, yeah.
Yeah, you're just seeing more and more of them lately, it just seems like. I mean.
On the public right of way?
Yeah.
Public right of way?
Yeah.
Out here.
No, 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 no.
Inside the gate.
It's not public right of way.
It's not a public right of way.
Behind the gate's not public.
For, for something like that, we, we do. Um, in here, there's a new chart or table that talks about signs that are exempt from permitting. We've never required permits for anything like that before. In the new ordinance, they're called incidental signs. And it basically says any sign, logo, or detail no greater than one and a half square feet. So if you have your little, don't let your dog go here, as long as it's under one and a half square feet, our ordinance doesn't.
Yeah, well, we don't, it's not allowed in Sapporo A R C. So when the Sapporo was, uh, using the whatever it was, the former B B and D or one of those or remote checking, they put a temporary sign out there somewhere. And we let that go, that was okay.
It was done without a permit from the town.
That's what I got. On the other hand, we're, we're helping Sapporo help the community, while they have backups on Seabrook Island, right?
Yeah, now if anyone were to have complained about that sign, we would have made it be taken down, but it officially was done without a town permit. Because we could not permit enough premises. Um, okay, there's nothing else on that one, um. On page one fifty-two, now we're in the site plan review process. So the site plan review is really targeted towards large-scale development projects. Not like a single-family home or something like that. So on page one fifty-two, section fourteen point three, there was an exemption worded in the ordinance that said a single-family and two-family home or like a duplex was not subject to the full site plan review process. Um, but a real strict reading of the rest of this section said, well, if you had an accessory structure, or if it was a conditional use, then you had to go through the full site plan review. All this changes saying is what's exempt from this section is any single-family or two-family dwelling. Any accessory structure or accessory use that's accessory to a single-family or two-family dwelling. Or any conditional use that's allowed within a single-family or two-family dwelling. So it's just removing that, that gray area um, as to whether planning commission is gonna have to get into the business of reviewing if somebody is gonna build a detached garage. We don't have that, it doesn't need to go through planning commission, so. If it's, if it's a dwelling itself tied to, accessory to, or within a dwelling, it's exempt from going through the full site plan review process. Now, they still have to submit a, a drawing and stuff and get permits, but they don't have to go through this much more complex and detailed um, process as like a you know, a new building at the marina or, you know, something like that.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Pages one fifty-eight through one fifty-nine. Um, this is another thing where I, I wanted to, it's not something that we have in place currently, but it's something we could have in the future. Um, when you get into the design, so this is what, when planning commissions reviewing what a building looks like. Um, historically, we were just looking for something that's harmonious with neighboring development. Uh, and that's essentially what paragraph eleven here has on one fifty-eight and one fifty-nine. Um, so they should be reasonably compatible in appearance with or shown hands the established general character. So that's, it's hard to quantify objectively what that means. Uh, so there's always going to be a little bit of subjectivity to it. Um, what I added was if you have an area where there is not neighboring development, then you can consider similar buildings elsewhere in the town. That I added to it. But then I also wanted to put in, um, there are a lot of communities where they actually have an architectural design manual, like the P, the POA has one. We do not. So it's basically, this is what we want buildings to look like. So the second part of my amendment says if council ever adopts an architectural standards manual, then anything that gets built has to conform with whatever that manual says, so.
If.
Just, just preserving it if we ever do.
Yeah, okay.
Very minor change. Uh, one seventy-six. Uh, one seventy six. Um, this is in the. Like design subdivision, design standards. Typically, you wanna, in paragraph four, typically you wanna. You don't want like these little one off reserve strips, you don't want something that's put in place to. You know, just to restrict somebody's access to a street or something like that. So generally, you don't wanna have reserve strips, uh, I, I felt that the. It said, except where justification is shown by the developer. That to me seemed a little bit broad, so I put in. Except where expressly authorized by this ordinances or in instances where the developer demonstrates to the satisfaction of the planning commission. That such, such strips or parcels are necessary to protect public health or safety. Or when the presence of critical areas, wetlands, or topography renders the use of the land infeasible. So if you can't build anything there anyway, we shouldn't really care if there's a, a little strip of land or something. So it's just putting a little bit more detail, um, instead of saying unless justification is shown. Any issue concerned with that? I'm not sure I know what a reserve strip is, but that's okay. It's just like a little. So you add some land that you didn't build on. Yeah. Now, you, you. What makes it a reserve? Well, I mean, you could theoretically, like. You know, if there is property between the neighboring property owner and you own a little strip. Between them and a street. Typically, you wouldn't wanna reserve a strip just for the purpose of restricting their access to the street. Or creating a separate piece to restrict their access, so. Could be something like that, um, but usually they're just little one off pieces that. At least here, they tend to get dedicated to the P O A because the developer doesn't want to deal with them and they just become. Common open space. Okay, by me. Uh, on page one eighty, one through one eighty. Oh, yeah. One seventy six, one seventy seven, so this is paragraph eleven. Um, this deals with if you have a street. If it's a dead end street. It says, no dead end street shall exceed eight hundred feet in length, so that's just kind of a general requirement. Like Beck twig. And it said. For the life of me, I was trying to remember what the fire code said, you have to have a turnaround if it's over a certain amount of feet. I couldn't find it, I didn't have time to look for it, so I just said, where required by the current edition of the international fire code, you have to have a turnaround. So, just a very simple amendment.
Okay.
Um, and that it has to be reviewed by St. John's Fire, so.
If a storage truck can't turn around in your dead end street, I don't think a fire truck will be able to do it either.
Starting at the bottom of page one eighty one, going through one eighty five. If you recall several years ago. There was a request that was made to change a street name. We determined at that time, we didn't have a policy regarding. How streets would be named or renamed, so a policy was recommended by planning commission, adopted by council. It wasn't included in the new draft, so I just put the whole thing word for word in the new draft, so. The only thing I changed is. In the past, it referred to different sections in the old D S O, now we're just referring to. Uh, the same sections in the new D S O. So it hadn't included it, it would just disappear? It would disappear. Yeah, because we're refeeling the D S O. That's correct.
But this is what we already passed, right?
Yes.
Couple of years ago.
Yep. If you're not creating anything new, you're just taking what we have and moving it on, I think it was really just. It was either an oversight or it came in, that, that ordinance may have been adopted after we. Reviewed that section with the committee and was just never put in after it was adopted, so. Well. Um, page one ninety four. This is another one, not that long ago, we changed our permit time limits, um, to mirror what the county had. I don't know what happened when I, when I ran the red line for this section, I think the next one, it didn't come up with the red changes. But basically, in, in two A and two B, we're just taking the exact same language that we have already on the books. And moving it into the new one, so not, not creating anything new. Any issue concerned with that? Uh, on one ninety six, um, we did talk a little bit about this at our workshop. About. Some of the restrictions that we had in place for temporary use permits. So what we've recommended is. The current ordinance says you can only get one for sixty days. The new ordinance says you can get one for ninety days. Um, the current ordinance says they can only be extended for thirty days. We recommended extending them to sixty days for, for extensions. And then the big thing that we've added is. Um, the current ordinance, um, says they have to go to planning commission each time you've extended it. This, this recommended draft says, as long as it's the same as the original, the zoning administrator can approve the extension. So, okay. Very, very minor change. Um, and I will say that this draft. Is taking council out of the process of having to review temporary use permits. Where they do have to be reviewed by current planning commission. They approve it, they're not reviewing it, making a recommendation to council, they have authority to review and approve it on their own. One ninety seven. Right now, the zoning administrator, without having to go through planning commission, can approve temporary use permits for less than. Uh, seventy two hours or up to seventy two hours. We recommend to just go into ten days. Um, this is primarily, they're usually just events, so like Alan Fleming tennis tournament. It's the same thing every year, it doesn't have to go to planning commission for, you know, a week or however long of that thing. So, so we just get the zoning administrator approval to do a temporary use for up to ten days.
So, quick question, Joe.
Yes.
Excuse me. During the pandemic in twenty twenty, some of those special use permits, as we were going up and down, we required. You know, hand sanitizer and masks and those kind of things, how taking, taking town council out of that, how would we approach that? They came up in the future.
Those were done by emergency ordinances that we were, um, renewing every sixty days.
So.
So if, if you felt the need for that, then you could put it in the emergency ordinance. And you can basically supersede whatever's in our code.
Okay, that answers that.
And that, that's what we did last time.
All right, thank you.
All right, on page two twelve. It's right at the end of the tunnel, I promise. Um, and this is one that we did talk about, um, at our workshop. Where we had nonconforming buildings, the, the original draft said that they could be expanded, you can expand a nonconformity. On the same plane, we basically just struck that language and said. Uh, it may not be enlarged or altered in a way that increases its nonconformity. So if you, if you work inside, you can still work inside, you don't have to remove the nonconforming stuff or to do that. You can expand it, but any expansion has to meet whatever the current setback is, so. The side yard is fifteen feet and you're ten feet off. What the prior version said, well, you can expand it ten feet off. What this says is you can expand it, but if the side yard is fifteen feet, any expansion has to be fifteen feet off of the lawn. I like this much better, um, and if you guys are good with it, move on to the next one. Okay. Um, two sixteen, in the enforcement and penalties. There, the language said that. If, after providing notice to someone who's violating the ordinance, they don't take whatever action is deemed necessary. Then the zoning administrator can put a stop work order on the property. We need to authorize the zoning administrator to put a stop work order on the property as soon as they identify him doing something in violation of the ordinance, so. I've changed this to, to give the zoning administrator that authority. And also, we had in there that. Um, we, we didn't have expressly written in there that if the zoning administrator identifies a violation. You know, with, with their discretion, depending on the violation, that they have the ability to issue a citation. Um, it basically only went into, you know, trying to. Um, bring them into conformities and sending a letter and giving time to correct or whatever. We'll still do all that, but if it's like a really egregious violation, we need the zoning administrator to have authority to issue a citation.
So my question is, it says the zoning administrator, other official, who is the other official?
Code enforcement officer.
Should we say that? Because another official could be me or captain.
That, I mean, actually, I think in the definition of zoning administrator. We say.
If the other official's not one of our defined terms, and right there, I'm just kind of curious.
Oh, really, I mean, when you're looking at that, though, that, that, the hypothetical scenario that you're writing, that you're talking about, it's only gonna come into play at one of y'all go pro, like, start writing all some citations.
But, you know, the other thing is, we could just say. Well, no, because you want your staff.
Yeah, what, what I would say is just strike out or other official because zoning administrator is a designated term.
Yeah.
And it, the, the, or the defined term, the definition says, where authority is delegated by the zoning administrator to another individual. The term also includes his or her designation.
So I say strike or other official. And then I don't have to go.
That would be an interesting call to get one of your council members. Starting writing tickets left and right.
I'm sure it's happened, so. So in the definitions, which start at page two nineteen. Uh, I'm not gonna read them all, I'm just gonna let you know that we've. Added definitions for building codes, S C D H E C and S C D O T. And then we've amended definitions for the comprehensive plan. For offense, for mean sea level, primary doom, substantial modification, town. Town administrator and zoning administrator. And most of those are just to bring them in line with what, um, you know, state definition or. Um, like, you know, town administrator and zoning administrator, we just updated. You know, chapter two in the town codes, and I was just referring to the update in the codes, so these, these are all very minor. Nothing of really any substance. And then we can also add wetland. To include that amendment as well. On two thirty five through two thirty seven, this is appendix. Starting at two thirty seven, um, appendix B. That's where we'll have the summary, we'll, we'll take the permitted and conditional uses for all of the districts and just have them in one location. I didn't hear anybody recommend any changes today to any of the districts, so we really shouldn't have any amendments, but if you were to make any changes. As to what uses are allowed in which districts, then at first reading today, then we would incorporate those here. Um, same thing with appendix C, which is the consolidated table of spatial requirements. Um, that's just, again, taking all the things from the earlier chapters and putting them into one. Table at the end of the document where they're easy to find. So any changes that get approved today at first reading, we'll incorporate those into this, and you'll see those at second reading as well. Appendix D, page two forty. Five, I think, no, two forty six. Um, off of the, and I did have Robert, our new buildings and grounds manager, review all these, just to. Make sure he was happy, we weren't allowing anything we shouldn't allow, or, you know, asking them to put something in that, you know, we, we don't want them to put in. And he came back, his only recommendation was we remove burning bush from the list of permitted shrubs. He said those have a tendency to be kind of invasive. And. Interestingly, the version that came out of planning commission, who said a Bradford pear was a permitted. Understory tree, but it was also a prohibited understory tree, and I think the reason for that is. Between the time we started and. Moved into the adoption phase, the state came out and they're now wanting Bradford trees gone in the state of South Carolina, so.
I mean, that's very common.
But all the, all the prohibited and invasive trees and shrubs and vines and herbs, those all actually come from statewide. I mean, we're not. Doing anything different out there. Last and not, but not least. We did not have our fee schedule, right now, it's, it's adopted as part of our D S O. The draft did not include the fee schedule, so I recommended that we just add. A new appendix, call it appendix E, and this will be the fee schedule. By and large, it's coming almost word for word from our current fee schedule. Um, the only changes I have recommended, um, were. On the. Tree, I'm sorry, the temporary use permit, which is on two fifty six. Paragraph H, it did say events and activities less than three days. I just changed that now to ten days, so if, if you guys are good with the. Change, then we don't have to bring those to planning commission, we can charge less for those.
Do we need to increase any of these, Joe? Because you talked to us about. How we were kind of. Too low on some things.
We just increased them.
I mean, I know we bumped them up, but. You know, we bumped them up, I was just curious if you thought we should bump them a bit more. You know, inflation.
Actually, with inflation, that's a very good point. Didn't you just say you spent eighty five dollars filling up the Tahoe today? We, we might have. I'll look at that, if I think we do, I'll, I'll give you an updated list for second reading. Yeah, and, and we actually just went up on a bunch of them, a year and a half ago, but. But they, they are still by comparison fairly low. Um, one of the. The changes that I did recommend is on the tree removal permits. If it's a protected tree removal permit, it's twenty five dollars per tree. And that's, I, I did look at what other communities are doing, that seems to be pretty standard. I would recommend if they come in after the fact, so they've already cut the tree down, they've gotten busted for it. And we charge them two hundred and fifty per tree. So typically on K, which is something we started doing when we last updated the fee, we call it our. Post facto surcharge. So if you start doing the work before you get a permit, by ordinance, we double the permit fee. Um, the only exceptions we had were for late short term rental permit applications, we just added a hundred dollar late fee. Um, and then I also pulled out tree removal, so if they start taking the tree down or they've already taken it down. It's gonna go from twenty five to two fifty per tree. So I think everything else is pretty much as is. Um, I did the. Permits for antennas. I think I may have changed something there, because we may have changed something in the. Antenna and wireless tower section, but other than that, everything is pretty much as. Do you wanna read, Paul, did you have anything you wanna add? See, hold on, I think you're muted.
No, I think you covered it well. Remains just to see it move forward.
Before I recap, are there any other questions, issues, concerns? Modifications we didn't talk about that you would like to see or any amendments to. Those items that we've already discussed. Here and now, quick recap, so it sounds like council was good with pretty much everything. That we had on our list with a couple modifications regarding. The waste receptacle. the waste receptacles to include recycling and debris. To remove the provision that allows accessory buildings to approach um, into side and rear setbacks. To modify the language for approachments of accessory structures and architectural features. To allow only ramps, air-conditioned stand, generator stands, porch porches in decks when abutting open space, previous patios when abutting open space, and for smaller lots under seventeen thousand five hundred square feet to allow the eaves and overhangs to approach up to eighteen inches. Um, the, from one, page one oh three, where we talk about no structures within twenty-five feet of the marsh, we'll just refer explicitly to the critical area, which is a defined tone. Um, increasing the tree size to require a tree removal permit to, from twenty-four inch to, or from twelve inch to twenty-four inch. Um, amending the definition of water body to include wetlands. And removing for the enforcement section, removing the term other official. I think that was all the changes we discussed. So if there are no other changes, our recommendation would be that you accept the revised version with staff recommended amendments for first reading, subject to those changes that I just discussed. And you can, this is a motion to amend, so you can take that up as one motion to amend. Second, vote on it. As long as that passes, then the ordinance on the floor will be the amended version. So moved.
Is our second?
Second.
Uh, just to clarify, for the record, is it the motion to approve the amendments?
Whatever Joe Joe, right now we're approving the amendment.
Motion to approve the amendments as discussed has been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussions of that motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the amendments or the D S O enacting ordinance, I'll call it, as discussed, we signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The amendments have passed. Which now brings us to actually trying to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, which is the enacting ordinance for the revised D S O as amended by the amendment.
Just a quick reading, right? For first reading, just a couple other items. No, we do have included in there the map. We, at this point, don't have any changes to the zoning map, so we we covered that at at great length at our workshop, so I, unless somebody wants to, I wasn't gonna go into and, uh, rediscover the zoning map, but just a reminder that this ordinance does include uh, adopting the new zoning map as well to basically map out all the new districts from the D S O. Um, so unless there were any questions about the transitions or the map itself, I didn't have any additional information to share on that.
The questions on the zoning. Uh, backing up a second. What I thought I heard you say was you were gonna add wetlands to the definition of water body. I think what we said was strike wetlands.
Deleter from the.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I thought I heard you wrong, but, okay. So we are now ready to vote to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four enacting the revised D S O as amended for first reading. All in favor, please signify your approval. Our ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four for first reading as amended, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved as amended.
Very good. Um, just as a reminder, we have our public hearing schedules for, uh, May seventeenth. Um, we did not nail down a time, um, as public safety that day. There was public workers, one of the committees meets that day. Um, I think it's, yeah, public safety, because it's Tuesday, two thirty. Um, typically, I mean, for regular meetings, we do two thirty. We usually don't go before one or later than two thirty, so anywhere in that time. I mean, I have it in here at two thirty. Already I have this one with. Is everyone else good with two thirty?
What's the date?
Seventeen.
What day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
That works for me.
It's one week prior to when second reading is scheduled to be on the agenda. So the intent of that is if, you know, you get a lot of people who come out with concerns, issues, it's giving us time to review that, you know, if we need to have any amendments prepared or anything, we can have those ready for second reading.
Two thirty on the seventy, then?
Two thirty?
Is that what you said?
I mean, that's what I have. I just need to know because we're gonna be placing the public hearings and sending out the notices.
Okay, okay.
So, two thirty?
Yep.
We will confirm it. Public hearing, May seventeenth, two thirty P M. Um, what we'll do is it'll be a a hybrid public hearing, so anyone who wants to come here will have an opportunity to, um, speak regarding the ordinance. Um, if someone has comments and they don't wanna come here, they can, um, zoom into the meeting and provide their comments that way. Uh, we'll also have a page set up on our website if, um, folks want to submit public comments online, um, they can do that as well.
So any time limit on public comments?
Uh, I think in our ordinance, public hearings are three minutes per person.
Similar to what we have here.
Yeah, and now typically a public hearing is you have a cap of thirty minutes, but council has the ability to waive the cap. So my recommendation, just based on how big and comprehensive this ordinance is, we just waive that.
I have, I have a six thirty meeting.
Yes.
So I, not, I'm just saying, yeah, I have a six thirty meeting today and I have a six thirty meeting on the seventeenth. So my point is that I'm trying to get a feel of how long.
One of those you never know until you find out who shows up. We we had our initial public meeting back in August of last year. It was a hybrid type meeting. And I think we had three or four people here, a couple online, so. But you never know, you got a hundred show up, you could have two show up, you know?
Yeah.
You don't know. Um, okay, well, we will make preparations to get that advertised and, um, we'll have the public hearing the seventeenth. And second reading, um, absent anything unforeseen, will be May twenty-fourth. Um, so we have light at the end of the tunnel.
Very good. Well, we've been through the entire agenda. And you've already ended up, I think, with members of council will make further amendments, so we'll dispense with that. And we will now proceed to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is our second.
Second.
Well, in favor of adjournment of the April council meeting, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.